I'd like to call the order of the city council meeting on March 1st, 2016. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Mars, here.
Kenyon.
Here.
Teddy. Kennet. Shawmar.
Here.
Latier.
President.
Long.
Here.
Gray. Here.
Mayor Jordan. Here. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hang on just a minute, let me get in my chair. All right, can everybody hear me tonight? Okay, good. All right, the first thing we want to do tonight, and the mayor's announcements, proclamation, and recognitions, we would like to honor and recognize the Federal High School State Championships in football, golf, cross-country, and volleyball. And I would like to lead the following proclamation. Whereas the Federal Bulldog volleyball, football, cross-country, and golf teams each won the 2015 state championship in their sports, and whereas recognition is hereby given to volleyball coach Jessica Phelan, football coach Darrell Patton, cross-country coach Michelle Fife, and golf coach Scott Williams, superintendent Paul Hewitt, the FHS Booster Club, and the entire school board, faculty, staff, students, and community for their support of the Federal Bulldogs. And whereas the members of the 2015 Federal Bulldogs volleyball, football, cross-country, and golf teams have demonstrated character, talent, faith, and relentless determination on their road to capturing state championships, and in having achieved that goal, they have brought honor to the Federal High School athletic program as well as to the citizens of the great city of Fayetteville. And whereas on behalf of the city of Fayetteville and its citizens, we wish to recognize the outstanding achievement and sacrifices of every member of the Federal Bulldog volleyball, football, cross-country, and golf teams, and also recognize, commend, and express appreciation for the tireless efforts of the coaches, the teachers, the parents, and fellow students in supporting these teams to a victorious season and the 2015 state championships. Now therefore, I, Lionel Jordan, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, March 1st, 2016 as Fayetteville High School State Championship Day in Fayetteville, Arkansas, and I encourage all citizens and civic, internal groups, educational associations, news media, and other community organizations to join in this tribute to Purple Dog pride in our state champions. Okay.
On behalf of football, I'd like to thank Mayor Jordan and the city council for recognizing the state championship. It's a huge honor to be here today, and I'd like to recognize or name a couple of players staying with me. This is Baron Vanster, junior wide receiver, senior plumber John Fay, also known for his golf swing as has Ben Billson, Jonathan Allison, senior receiver, junior office lineman Ty Clary, and young man holding the trophy is Junior Core Diak, David Powell.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan and the city council. I'd like to take you, I brought with me from the golf team, Luke Dong, Jackson Hill, Andrew Helsaw, and Jake Warner.
Thank you, on behalf of FHS volleyball, I brought a couple, Joe Gisby, junior Abby Carlo, and super sophomore Haley Warner.
Thank you, Mayor and the city council, I'm the cross-country coach, and I would like to recognize, I guess, my amazing runners, they had a great season, and I'm really proud of them. I brought with me a senior Colin Pilkington, who's All-State and All-Star three years in a row, and senior All-State captain Tyler Davis, and our freshman Phenom, All-American, first one who's ever been from Fayetteville High School, which is pretty amazing, freshman All-American, second place at state, so he was All-State, and then an All-Star, of course, against Oklahoma All-Star, so, thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. Thank you, Colin, great season.
He's a purple dog.
I know. What about you?
Appreciate you.
Very much. Thank you, great season. All right, let's give another round of applause. I understand there'll be a few more of those championships coming this spring, so we'll do another round of these in the next few months. Next order of business we have tonight is the fourth quarter financial report by Paul Becker.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is the final report for the 2015 closing fiscal year. General fund had surplus of $1.6 million, that's primarily due to sales taxes being up by 7% and building permits which were up much higher than we had anticipated, was a good year for development, apparently. Street fund showed a small surplus of about $100,000, however, after reappropriations are adjusted into New Year, they'll probably be a fund balance next year there of about $2.8 million. Remember, we budgeted $1 million from that in the 2016 budget, so it'll probably end up 2016 at about $1.8 million, which is better than I had originally anticipated. Parking fund had a surplus of about $99,000, revenues were up larger than we had anticipated, that's good, that helps with our bond issues, and helps us with ongoing capital projects that we have for the parking fund. Parks Development Fund had a surplus of about $1.3 million, however, that's an operating surplus, remember, we have some major capital projects going forward, basically being the regional park. Now, revenues for the Parks Development Fund was up about $250,000 for the year, that enabled to put in an extra baseball field that we had talked about earlier, and complete the life for the soccer field, so that project's going very, very well. Water and Sewer Fund was up for sewer billing about 2.6% for the year, and water slightly under 1%, and that's because the year was wetter than the prior year. So, as we remember, we had quite a bit of rainfall first quarter of last year. Recycling had a deficit of about $400,000, revenues were up due primarily because of the construction, the rental of the trash containers was up, plus normal fees were up about 1.4%, so that had a positive effect also. Now, remember, again, we've got capital programs going on in the recycling and trash collection system, plus we're currently looking at the way we're recycling, we'll discuss that further in the future, we'll end up with probably about a $3.5 million balance going into the end of next year. Now, the airport, we talked about before, it had about $400,000 loss, that is due to capital expenditures, and they don't normally line up with the federal reimbursements. However, we'll have a funding balance, we'll be down in funding balance to about $100,000, $150,000, as we talked the last time we discussed this issue preliminarily, and as I talked at budget time, we may in the future have to be looking at the airport for some subsidy funding in the capital area, all depends on how successful we are at securing federal funds to help us in that vein. This was a very, very good year for City Fayetteville, so I'm happy to report that, like I said, it was a good year for 2015, and we hope it continues into 2016, however, we do have to remember the sum of our revenues were up, I think, quite a bit higher than I would expect to continue, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What questions we have, Paul, on financial report? Everybody good? All right, thanks, Paul. All right. All right, next order of business is consent agenda. Number one, approval of February 16, 2016, city council meeting minutes. Number two, resolution to approve a one-year contract extension with Insta-Form Technologies Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $330,000 for sewer rehabilitation using cured-in-place Santos sewer linings. Number three, a resolution pursuant to Fayetteville Code of Ordinance Section 39.10C4 to authorize the mayor to pay the amount of $8,971.91 to Hog Dwellings LLC, and $7,936.56 to Serpro of Fayetteville Springdale for a wastewater damage claim arising at 902 West Cleveland Street. Number four, a resolution to approve supplemental agreement number one to the contract with Mckell Allen Consulting Engineers Incorporated for additional construction phase services associated with the Old Wire Road sewer main replacement project, which will increase the total amount of the contract from $228,644 to an amount not to exceed $250,402, and to approve a budget adjustment. Number five, a resolution to award bid 16-19 and authorize a contract with TG Excavating Incorporated in the amount of $2,373,333 for construction services associated with the Old Wire Road sewer main replacement project, to approve a project contingency in the amount of $237,333.30, and to approve a budget adjustment. And number six, a resolution to approve a one-year contract with Hub International in the amount of $13,000 with automatic renewals for three additional one-year terms for the provision of insurance, brokerage, and consultation services. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
No move.
A motion to second to accept the consent agenda as read. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Mars.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Kennet.
Yes.
Shawmar.
Yes.
Latier.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Okay, unfinished business, number one. The ordinance for rezoning that property described in rezoning position RZN 15-5240 for approximately 128 acres located at 2514 West Lori Road from RA Residential Agricultural, RSF1 Residential Single Family, one unit per acre, and RSF4 Residential Single Family, four units per acre, to RA Residential Agricultural, RMF24 Residential Multi-Family, 24 units per acre, NC Neighborhood Conservation, and NS Neighborhood Services, subject to a bill of assurance. I'll entertain a motion and go to the second reading.
Come in.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Mars.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Kennet.
Yes.
Shawmar.
Yes.
Latier.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
And ordinance for rezoning that property described in rezoning position RZN 15-5240 for approximately 128 acres located at 2514 West Lori Road from RA Residential Agricultural, RSF1 Residential Single Family, one unit per acre, and RSF4 Residential Single Family, four units per acre, to RA Residential Agricultural, RMF24 Residential Multi-Family, 24 units per acre, Neighborhood Conservation, and Neighborhood Services, subject to a bill of assurance.
Okay, anything to say on this?
Just want to bring your attention, as I mentioned at the agenda session, two weeks ago, when this was heard on the first reading, there was a revised bill of assurance that was passed out at that meeting, that has been now incorporated within the agenda packet so that it is reflective of the bill of assurance that was discussed at that meeting with the council, and you don't have anything for it?
Any questions for Jeremy? Okay, does the applicant have anything they'd like to say?
My name's Ron Cabbins, I'm the current owner of Razorback Park Golf Course, and I'm just, I don't have anything really new to say, I just wanted to say I'm here to answer any questions that may arise.
My name's Hugh Jarrett, I'm with the potential developer of Razorback Golf Course. In the interest of time, I'm just going to address a couple of issues that have come up between the last meeting and tonight. The first issue is the issue of flooding and the floodplain in that area. The issue of development in the floodplain, it's been mentioned that the floodplain cannot be developed, and that's just not true. I would encourage you all to talk to Jeremy and the planning staff, floodplains are developed all day, they're developed, Sam's is in the floodway, Claver Creek is in the floodway, and statements that floodway cannot be developed is just not true, it happens. Also, you can ask the, I encourage you to ask city staff, we'll go with whatever they say, whether development in the area can help the flooding problems in the area, and I think you'll find that development can help the flooding problems in that area. The second issue that's come up, I was under the weather last night, so I couldn't attend the Board Four meeting, and there's an issue about certain traffic counts, and at the last meeting, I had some numbers that I used for apartments and homes based on the bill of assurance, and it comes to about 7,300 trips a day is what Razorback built out, plus the existing traffic on Dean Solomon Road come to. So, it's about 7,300 trips a day, again, those numbers can be verified by city staff, and we encourage you to talk to them, that there is no danger on Dean Solomon from development in that area, especially with traffic improvements that'll be required. So, taking some of that out of the picture, I believe that really, it's not an issue of whether Fayetteville needs apartments, Fayetteville, it's clear that Fayetteville needs apartments, last week in the paper, the Skyline Report said so, I think it's really more of an issue of, does Fayetteville want apartments in this area? I think there's a lot of people who work here, who should be able to live here also, and again, I'll be here to answer any questions y'all might have throughout the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're not going to take, anybody else, any other, I'll take public comment in a minute, unless it's associated with the applicant. Okay, I'll bring it back to the council, what comments, questions do we have in the council, or Alan, I believe you have something?
I have a question for Mr. Jarrett, if I could.
Sure.
Sorry, I tried to ask before he got that right down.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Yes, sir.
You had mentioned that there would be less danger with required infrastructure improvements, is that accurate?
I said there would not be a danger
Right.
With required infrastructure improvements.
Okay, but you know, since we're only talking about zoning, we can't really consider those infrastructure improvements, right?
I totally understand, and I wouldn't be on that if it wasn't an issue that's come up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, council, any other question? Yes, Adele?
Yes, Mayor, I would like for Jeremy to explain for us how is it that development can help flooding?
Okay, so I want to clarify something Mr. Jarrett mentioned, we generally do not allow development in the floodway, and that's not proposed here either. The floodplain, however, is a different story, it's very specific both within FEMA regulations and within our own city regulations. He's right, there is a lot of development within our floodplain, we do have a stream-side protection zone that provides for a buffer for streams in the area. Claver Creek actually has one more substantial buffer areas, if you think about Claver Creek subdivision, the Fans Club area with Wilson Springs, there's a pretty significant continuous buffer with this, one of these, this property actually being one of the ones that we don't have a buffer on, the rezoning we believe would provide that enduring green network. But, to answer that question, properties can be developed in the floodplain, subject to certain rules. Related to, can a property, or can a development improve flooding? It certainly can in terms of detaining water with a situation where runoff is prevalent pre-development, and it's not controlled in a way, or it's flooding homes in a way, a detention pond, for instance, can slow down, reduce the velocity at which water goes into a stream, so that's one way in which it can help. Development can also, depending on how it's done, and where it's done, can provide for holding areas within the development itself, so essentially it can slow down some of that flow divergence, and slow it down from getting into the creek. This particular area of town, as most of the residents know, the reason it floods so much is because it is so flat, and so it has a very wide floodplain, the water slowly rises and slowly also recedes, and so that's one of the reasons why we have such big flooding areas within the West Fayetteville Basin.
So, what you're naming are low-impact development processes, right?
Sure, that's one of our, that's what we encourage all developments to do, is to utilize those techniques to assist in creating areas, and one of the ways is to preserve some of that green space, particularly adjacent to the creek, and to the streams that we have, to preserve some of that filtration, both the water quality, but also quantity controls.
And how long have we been asking developers to do those kinds of things? The reason I'm asking, I'm dealing with a really bad situation on the other side of town, and where a neighborhood is being flooded because of, they feel because of some development, I don't know, so I'm just kind of trying to figure out how we as a city can be responsible in trying to get our development, do our development such a way that the current neighbors are not affected.
So, we've been, the city's had detention requirements, water volume control, flooding control requirements for, okay, probably decades, it's been a long time, not always, but at least back into the 90s, we had subdivisions built with detention ponds, and that really was for a primary purpose of holding water, so that in a major storm event, that it would leave the site at the same rate as it did pre-development. So, that's what we talk about, we talk about post-development flows must equal pre-development flows, and so, those particular ordinances have been in place for many, many years. The low-impact development techniques, which is sort of a sweep of different options, including those water volume controls, detention pond controls, those are more recent, probably within, we had a low-impact development ordinance, I believe, adopted in, I guess, 2011 or '12, where it was potentially an option, and then more recently, in the last year and a half or so, the city council adopted a drainage criteria manual, a new drainage criteria manual, which incorporated a lot of those low-impact development techniques within the actual ordinance itself, so it's something that we don't have a ton of projects out there, but I attended a conference, presented at a conference just a few weeks ago, and the examples are beginning to really show themselves, and show that they're working, so it's a matter of time before we start to see a lot of those impacts.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we're going to open it up for public comment. Now, here's the rule, everybody gets one turn at the microphone, and let's see, a council member brings you back up to ask you questions, okay? Give us your name and address, give your remarks to me, don't engage city council member and other member of the public, or I will have to redirect you back to me. Stay on topic, and no rude or derogatory remarks about anybody's character or anything like that, or I will, the rule on that is what? Now, has everybody got the rules? Okay, who would like to be first?
Good evening, my name is John Kestner II, I live at 3037 North Azure Avenue, Fayetteville, and this is in reference to the Razorback Golf Course. Since this is the natural state, I would suggest alternatives as one being a migratory bird-flyway sanctuary, leaving the property as it is, or as a world-class city, it could be a city park, like a mini Central Park of New York City, or it could be maintained as a city golf course. These are three ideas that would be alternatives to more urban sprawl. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Who would like to be next?
Good evening, my name is Alan Edinson, I'm representing the Northwest Arkansas Land Trust. We own the 121-acre Wilson Springs Preserve adjacent to the proposed rezoning site. We want to make sure that the environmental importance of the area is understood and carefully considered in the decision-making process. The entire area was once a larger intact wetland and floodplain located on, at the headwaters of Claver Creek, which is a tributary of the Illinois River. As we already kind of talked about, wetlands provide important ecosystem services, they slow, hold, and filter stormwater runoff in the area. The Land Trust manages Wilson Springs as a unique wet prairie habitat, and we are continually working to restore and maintain the former wet prairie ecosystem through partnerships with Arkansas Game and Fish Commission and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. The golf course property is a continuation of the same important riparian and wet prairie habitat as Wilson Springs Preserve. Even as a golf course, it provides some slowing and filtering of stormwater and runoff, and provides habitat. The property has the potential to return to a more natural state, which will improve the ecosystem services function. The environmental impact of any rezoning should be carefully considered in this area of Fayetteville, which provides important ecosystem services to the city, such as slowing of stormwater, stream bank erosion control, filtering of pollutants, wildlife habitat, and scenic assets that improve surrounding property values. We hope that the city will take this opportunity to go above and beyond in protecting the unique value of this area and other places like it in our community. The Land Trust is here to serve as a resource, and we are willing to assist in any way we can.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
So, we've got information regarding what you all do, but do you have an opinion on this specific item that we're considering as far as rezoning?
We do not have an official opinion on the rezoning.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Does everybody understand we're talking about the rezoning tonight? Okay. Also, if you have a cell phone, would you please put your cell phone on, that's okay, I just, everybody put it on silent if you would. Okay, who would like to address this next?
Good evening, I'm Kyle Smith, live at 2801 West Dove Drive, that's about 800 feet off the southwest corner of the area that would be apartments or RMF24. At last night's Board Four meeting, I believe Alderman Long was talking about the balance of feedback he's gotten on this, and how it's several hundred residents against, and like, two people for this rezoning.
Three.
Three, sorry, I'm not sure if you were counting me in that or not?
I was.
Okay, well, make it two, because I think that you've got a couple of other categories that we should consider, and one of those is people that just don't care, which is probably the vast majority of folks, who figure change happens and will adapt to it, and that's where I'd count myself, I'm not sure that I have a particular desire for development like this in the backyard, but I'm also not opposed to it. The fourth category that we'll never hear from in a meeting like this is future residents who don't yet know that they're going to call that home someday. I think it might be important that there's some folks in town who are thinking about that potential, and what their presence would mean, or what the availability of something like this would mean to them. Last, excuse me, at the last city council meeting, the question was raised about what responsible development means, and whose responsibility it is to monitor that. Normally, you have the rules, Fayetteville's rules for responsible development posted on the wall behind you, but we don't have that here tonight. Your first one is to encourage appropriate infill, and this puts Your first one is to encourage appropriate infill and this puts development right next to the interstate. That would seem to make a lot of sense. Your second goal is to discourage sprawl and this increases density again in an infill location seems to make sense. Encouraging the traditional town form. I appreciate the addition of the neighborhood services zone that might bring some business and some destinations to the neighborhood so that we're not sending all of our trips across town or down the interstate to Weddington. Let's skip a couple here because the sixth goal is attainable housing and Fayetteville's apartment occupancy rate's been a hot topic in the last couple of weeks. The reason I skipped four and five is because that's where my concerns are. Goal number four is to encourage livable transportation network and we have heard and will continue to hear a lot about the infrastructure problems in the neighborhood, mostly along the ends of Dean Solomon where half of the road is great, the other half is a ditch and both ends have a little bit of a bottleneck on them. So I think what we need is your commitment to increase connectivity in the neighborhood and to invest in the infrastructure to support the density that we desire to develop according to the city plan. And goal number five, really this is my big one, it's encouraging the enduring green network. To me, this is the deal breaker. You know, if this is built to zone, I know we don't consider development now, but presumably an RMS zone brings RMS development, that's going to be a lot of pavement and a lot of shingles. If we have the engineering ability to guarantee that the downstream habitats at Claver Creek are protected with development of this zone, I say go for it. I welcome folks to what I think is the best part of town and be glad to have some new neighbors. If we can't, then none of the others matter and responsible development's going to have to get more creative. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address this on this? Sarah?
Hello. Members of the council, Sarah Lewis. I live on Berry Street in Fayetteville in Ward Four and am a former Ward Four City Council member. I wanted to come this evening and I, and speak to this because of that role that I played as a Ward Four City Council member and meeting with many of the residents in that part of town a number of times in my role. And those meetings tended to be about flooding up into those properties. And that has to do with more and more impervious surfaces upstream from those, that floodplain that this development is right next to. And so what I'm saying is that flooding's already happening and the more, the more development we have in this area, it just puts that more and more at risk. It doesn't mean we don't, we should have zero development. It means it's a high, highly sensitive area. And it means that, that there are techniques Jeremy was outlining that, that I would suggest as the council considers this zoning, which I think is great that it's the form-based zoning and that we're using that, but I would maybe suggest a contingency that we outline specific techniques that should be, that should partner or should go along with that zoning, maybe a conditional kind of zoning that would be tagged on to that property, leaving flexibility, of course, in the design by the developers, but calling out that because of the sensitivity of that property and the proximity to the floodplain and that we're already seeing flooding in that area, that might be one technique that the council can take to really visibly show recognition of that land being an area that needs to have recharge and not runoff into, into that floodplain that's already at its limits. So thank you so much and I appreciate the careful consideration of this. I'm so happy to see so many people here speaking up for this and for and against it, but in regards to this. Again, I think the proposal of a form-based code is always the right approach. I think we have some tools in place in our drainage criteria manual that can help, but I would recommend really calling those out specifically in this in order to really recognize that any development that would come into this zoning as a result of this would need to follow some very specific techniques to protect those downstream homeowners. And again, you're only deciding on the zoning, so that means there is some flexibility that could happen to this property on down the line. So you have that ability to tag, tack on some extra expectations in a zoning process and I hope you'll consider using that.
Any other questions?
Hello, Dr. Lewis.
Hi.
I just have a question. What I'm struggling with is that I do think this will be developed at some point. It's too nice of a piece of property and with the economy being what it is. Would you be more concerned, less concerned, or equally as concerned if it was a development following the RSF four type scenario as some of the other developments down Mount Comfort did and some things like that? I'm just curious if, if that makes an impact in your mind, one way or the other.
I would be equally concerned. I think this, if any sort of increase in impervious surface or, you know, driveways, roofs in that area is going to cause an impact. I know that we have good engineers and good techniques in place, but it's going to, this calls for some, some extra recognition of the need for those, those technical designs in this, on this property. I am a fan of form-based. I think it's the, it creates more community, it creates more walkability, but it doesn't necessarily address the runoff issues.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Sarah?
Dr. Lewis, would, would some bills of assurance concerning low-impact development, would that meet our need, do you think?
I think that is one.
And is that appropriate?
That would be one of the tools that should be considered, I think, for sure.
And, and of course, we know that those do follow the zoning.
Yeah.
So if, if this developer didn't develop and someone else bought it, it was still, they would still be tied to that, is that correct?
Right, exactly.
Thank you.
It's a great idea.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Oh, sorry, Mark.
When you're looking at the way that this is proposed, there's high density on one end and then it goes less. Do you think the way that it's arranged in this is manageable? Because really it's putting the high density in one area rather than spreading it, or multifamily density.
For the project or the zoning?
Well, the zoning, because the zoning is actually a difference.
Right. So the zoning is more dense further away. I think that, that is a good technique and I still think the whole property is, has issues because of, like I said, that area is flooding already. So breaking up that impervious surface is going to be key and really ensuring that the water is slowed down and able to soak in is going to be really important.
Anything else? All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, who else would like to address this on this?
I got here late. I forgot you were moving tonight temporarily. The things that Sarah said were perfectly in line. I think in the future, there should always be more attention paid to what's going to happen downstream in the future. Right now, we're looking at development upstream affecting that land by adding more water. Each square foot, each little parcel, each little inch or two of impervious surface that we had will endanger property downstream. And that property hasn't been proposed for development in many cases. Probably there are some that are right now already developed that nobody's even come to speak about that are downstream in there. So this really is the most important concern. And by the way, it's the birthday today of the Buffalo River. Was that 1974 when it was actually turned over? So that's one of the win-wins in Arkansas. Sort of about some of the same things, wildlife habitat and water that can be enjoyed instead of hated.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else like to address this on this?
Hi. My name's John Calhoun. I live at 3243 Raven Lane. I wanted to say that I'm not against RMS zoning or apartments in general. I myself have used that form of housing multiple times with different companies, Lindsay included, and I have respect for people that live in that type of zone and that type of housing. I think what this comes down to is access and resources and I think this specific project is lacking in the planning for, for that. The north end of Dean Solomon has a very dangerous left turn. Not only is it on a high-traffic area, but there's a blind hill involved also leading up to there. It's very narrow. There's a, it's pretty cool looking actually, the wall, the retaining wall, but it gets really close to the edge of this hill and so there's not a lot of room there. When traveling on that with my wife recently, we were coming, at the same time another car was coming in the other direction and it was one of those situations where it's like, I think I can get by, but everyone tries to suck in and see what happens and it's just uncomfortable. I can't imagine having a high density of traffic there. I think you will see that because I live close to there and that's the way that I go north. I go through Johnson because the interstate can be a nightmare, even though it's close by. Trying to get on right there is, is not always ideal, a lot of traffic. So you might notice I'm supporting, or sporting a little bit of extra gear tonight. This is because someone tried to make a dangerous left turn in front of me and I was not at fault, but I was left with two broken bones and a loss of feeling in my thumb as an innocent party. So I think it's very important to consider the safety of the zoning, increasing traffic in a dangerous area. You can hurt innocent people with that and it can be very unfortunate. So if you can't guarantee that you have the funding to improve the safety of the traffic pattern, then I think you have to vote against rezoning because from what we've seen, there's no other planned routes in and out of this property other than Dean Solomon, which is an underdeveloped road. And even developed with that amount of traffic, it's going to lead to problems and there's not much, from my understanding, that the city can do to 112 because it's owned by the highway department. So it would take a lot of work and a lot of money and I don't know that any part of the plan has successfully shown that, that those issues would be addressed. So I encourage you to vote, vote no. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Who else would like to address this on this?
Hi, I'm Jim Irwin. I live at 2925 West Topaz and the actual golf course is my backyard. It does flood. I enjoy it flooding from time to time because it brings out the geese and everything else, waterfowl out there. I'm not against the development of the property, but just like a lot of people have said, the part of the road that they're actually, they're going to do is not the dangerous part of the roads. I think right now, this needs to be addressed first just by the amount of traffic that already exists on that, on that road and then look at developing this after the fact with the thought of other properties, because there are other properties along that road that will be developed eventually. So I think that needs to be addressed first before just allowing builders just to build and then city has to come back behind them and try to figure out what's going to be, what they're going to do about it all. Because some of the property that is against that road is already developed and so nobody is going to develop it anymore. So that lies to the city to fix that road in those areas. So like I said, I just, I'm not against the development of property. I just don't think right now is a good time for it and this is not, I don't believe this is the right plan for this property. Just like everybody else said, the drainage for this property, I think RMS four to me makes more sense in there so we don't have as many roads, streets, as much housing in the, covering the land up and it helps with the absorption of the road. And a retaining pond would be nice to create a little pond for that area. So, I mean, I envision that they're going to take out the one retaining pond that's currently there to allow, because the property is worth more than the retaining pond. So that has to be all thought of when you figure out that they're going to, to develop this and that is the lowest spot in that whole area of that, of, from one ridge to the other. So that's where the water's going to end up. And I imagine you've probably seen videos and flooding pictures of it that's already there. And I just think that needs to be addressed before we just start allowing builders to go crazy just building and then they're scratching, the city's scratching their head and trying to figure out what to do about it. And who's going to be responsible for additional flooding to other people's properties in the future, you know? If building this damages, causes damage to other people's properties, who's responsible for that? Because at this point in time, you have a chance to stop it and think about what's going on with that property. So.
Thank you. Who else would like to address this on this?
Mr. Mayor, my name is Terrell Bowen and I live at 3084 North Hager Drive. This is newly developed property adjacent to the area. I have sent emails to each of you over the weekend expressing my opinion that I'm against the zoning as it is asked to be revised. And so when I moved there in early September of this last fall, I didn't appreciate really what the impact was going to be. I've moved from the lake where water runs off hills really quick and I've now moved to a flat land and particularly over Christmas when we had the big rain, really got a sense of what that's all about. At the end of the day, I simply would like to state that I'm against revising this zoning for this project and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Who else would like to address this on this?
Good evening. My name's Craig Smith. I live at 3145 West Salem Road. My concerns are basically the same as everybody else that you heard. We're not against development. We're not against Lindsay. We certainly do not wish to stop Mr. Cavan's from selling his property. That's nobody's intent. The infrastructure is the primary problem here. When I leave my house, it's about the same time everybody leaves their house. I work on the square or near the square. And so the logical option for me is to take West Salem to Salem and then choose either to go north to Howard Nickel or go south to Mount Comfort. I do neither. If I go south, I typically hit the school traffic at the school there on Salem and it's backed up blocked both ways from parents trying to drop off their children. You simply cannot get through. Even if you did, you would come to Mount Comfort. I personally stood there and watched it one day to see how bad it really got and from I-49 on Mount Comfort, the traffic was all the way back past Salem Road. That's three-quarters of a mile. During that time that I was watching, there was a young boy that was trying to catch the bus and he had to cross Mount Comfort and there's no way to cross it. There's no crosswalks there. He ran across that traffic and I watched him almost get hit by a car that was coming in the far lane, thinking they could sneak past the other drivers and it was doing about 55. It stopped within 10, 15 feet of him. So one of the most horrible things I've ever seen. If I go north to Howard Nickel, I've personally sat in that traffic. It backs up a quarter to a half a mile every morning. The problem there is that where it meets 112, you're competing with everybody on 112 going into Fayetteville or going north and then this blind herd out of Dean Solomon. I took time to go there and watch one morning and just sit in that neighborhood and watch it back at Dean Solomon. And you can hear the horns, the screeching tires. It's obvious that it's, it's an issue. It's just a safety issue. So how do I go? I choose to go down a gravel road, West Salem Road and let my truck take that punishment to get to Dean Solomon, turn south on Dean Solomon and go to Shiloh to get out there. It's the lesser of the evils. But even then, for example, recently I was the sixth car in line from Shiloh- But even then, for example, recently, I was the sixth car in line from Shiloh to turn left on to Mount Comfort towards the bypass. That light doesn't last long enough for people to get through, and I know that can be adjusted, but at the time that I was there, three cars made that left-hand turn before the light turned red. The two, four, and five in front of me, both ran the red light, and all they did was manage to just get into the intersection, because it was backed up from the bypass entry all the way back up to that stoplight. So they achieved almost nothing except blocking the traffic on Mount Comfort, which caused more road rage and aggravation. So that's a very difficult place to go as well. All these things, these are our primary concerns, is just keeping people safe and ensuring that they can get in and out. And I know that at some point, there will be a reasonable way to do that. We just don't think that right now is the time, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Who would like to address this? Who else would like to address this on this?
Good evening. I'm Zach Ullott. I live on two-five-seven-zero West Van Nuys. I can't say a lot of things that haven't already been said. I just wanted to put my voice out here that this is a major concern. I live in the area. I'm in the trenches. I see the flooding. I see the traffic. It sounds like some of the philosophy on rezoning is that you shouldn't make the area worse, and I can't think of a way that rezoning this to the 24 could possibly make it better. The only thing I can see is that would fit more taxpayers into that area. It will not improve the traffic, and it will not improve the flooding. These are some of my major concerns in my home, and I just, with respect, would like a vote of no.
Okay. Thank you. Who else would like to address this on this?
Hi. My name is Carly Grace. I live in Ward Four. I'm building a house on a neighborhood, in a neighborhood right off of Dean Solomon right now. I've been pretty involved in this discussion from the beginning. I've been to all the Planning Commission meetings and went to Lindsay's meetings that they had with the neighborhood. I feel pretty invested, time-wise, in this discussion. And I'm sure you do by now, since this is the second reading, and I would think perhaps the more time that's spent deliberating this, and the more invested you feel, you might feel pressure to concede to rezoning the property, or maybe you see something desirable, like NC zoning or Neighborhood Services zoning, something appealing, and you feel more pressure to concede some RMF 24 to gain a good thing. I'd just like to say, let's not be fooled into thinking that RMF 24 zoning is a requirement to achieve these other good things. I realize in this current proposal is, but as it's been mentioned, this is a great piece of property. It will be rezoned, or it will be developed, even if it is left RMF, or RSF four, like it is now. So let's be clear, the neighbor, the neighbors in this area are completely okay with zoning. We can't control that, or with development. We can't control development, but we, you guys can control the zoning and doing it responsibly. Also, let's not lose sight of the fact that muddled in all of the numbers in Lindsay's proposals and bills of assurance, that in the midst of all the good things, the Neighborhood Services, Neighborhood Conservation, we've been trying to work with them on their bill of assurance, and as far as the RMF 24 goes, and they haven't been willing to budge. We're still talking about an irresponsible and inappropriate number of apartments that will be two to three stories high. They don't, this zoning, new zoning, doesn't fit in the 2030 plan for this space. Lindsay's unwilling to negotiate this number to a reasonable one. They, one thing that really hasn't changed much is the total number of apartments that we're talking about, and, you know, there's just not really, I don't think that you could really say that RMF 24 would have less impervious surfaces than leaving it like it is RSF four, because with RMF 24, you're going to have parking lots, you're going to have, I mean, probably the same number of roof coverage, because they'll be higher, but that'll mean more parking lots for all those people and sidewalks. Infrastructure's been a really hot topic tonight, and that may be the number-one reason why you should vote no for this. I really wish that Lindsay had done their presentation again, so you could see the map freshly on your mind, but there is no way to put more roads east to west into this area, and Dean Solomon's only north-to-south entrance. So we can talk all day about, well, if we do allow this rezoning, we'll just leave it to development, and they'll just have to make sure that they develop it in a responsible way. Well, there is no way to do that, because there are no way to put roads in there. There's an Audubon Preserve to the very east of the property. There's a creek to deal with. There's not anything we can add to, to make this work. So I just, I think we're being really wishful, saying, "Well, we're only responsible for the zoning, and we can worry about responsible development later." Because the zoning, we're talking about a much denser zoning, and I just think it's irresponsible. So please don't be fooled by all the quote-unquote compromise that these apartments, or this development, has been, has been assuming. They're not really compromising with the density. And so even though other details have wavered, they've been great, add-ins and NC and NS zoning. The main thing that we're fighting against hasn't changed, so please do the right thing and vote no.
Carly, before you go down, I know that you were at all the Planning Commission meetings that I watched also, and so you are well-versed in the discussion of the difference, different zoning classifications, and the Planning Commission did not vote for the RMF 24. Do you remember the discussion, or do you have an opinion on that discussion specifically and how it relates to this?
Well, I think we can all agree that this is a, and this is what was discussed at the Planning Commission meetings. This is a great piece of property. It will probably be developed, and so there will be higher density than there is currently. But, and, you know, the neighbors in the area are open to NC and NS zoning. A little bit of RSF four was mentioned. The main thing that we're concerned about is, I mean, RMF 24 is just a huge jump from RSF four, density-wise, and I, I am all about infill also and multifamily housing, but we're not in a land shortage right now. It's not, I mean, we, there's not a shortage of land right now. This just isn't the best place to, if we're going to rezone a piece of land, it shouldn't be this one. It's not responsible, and there are probably other parcels that Lindsay could look at if we, if it's really about, we need apartments right now. But that's not what we're discussing. We're discussing this piece, and, so I don't really know what you're asking about...
I think you hit it. I think you did.
I mean, the, the reason that the Planning Commission voted no, I mean, was because it's irresponsible, and they agreed on that, so I would love it if you took that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carly. Who else would like to address this on this?
John Thorne. I live at twenty-three nineteen West Wolf Run Drive. The pines at Springwood, which is directly to the east of the golf course, were a forty-eight unit condominium. My, my biggest concern, the multifamily 24 on the south end of the property, where, where the assumed north entrance to that property is probably the most dangerous area on Dean Solomon Road, because, because it goes uphill, the view of the road, when you're coming on to Dean Solomon, from our, our units, is, is really difficult to see somebody coming over the hill toward the north, and I, I just feel like that that's, that will be a dangerous intersection. Obviously, they'll have a south entrance also, but I, I think that you need to consider the lay of the land in that, in that area where, where their access in and out would, would be, in my, in my opinion, a dangerous situation.
Okay. Thank you. Who else would like to address us on this?
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Wes Berry. I live at twenty-eight seventy-five West Topaz. My property is also, my backyard is there on the golf course, and while the views are beautiful and all that, that's, that's not necessarily what we're here to talk about. Just have a few things. I don't think I'm going to add anything from a flooding or a safety issue. I think that's been made very clear, how we feel about that, and backed up with some solid facts, in my opinion. One thing I would just ask is, you know, the, the Planning Commission did vote this down, and I ask you to remember that when you make your vote. The other things are that Ms. Gray mentioned some bill of sale ideas. I like all that. It's, it's a good idea. My concern is, I don't think you can make them strict enough to meet the concerns that we have. And if you ever did, I'm not sure that it would still make financial sense for Lindsay to develop. And that, that's kind of the two things I would ask you to, to consider when you do make your decision tonight, and I really don't have anything else up to that.
Okay. Who else would like to address us on this?
Good evening, Council. My name is Robert Rhodes. I'm with the law firm of Paul Estle, and I represent four neighborhood associations. I've appeared before you before in this representation, and we have tried our very best to present our thoughts and our concerns and not just flood with redundant comments, so I will not do that. But I would ask, well, I don't know, I guess I would tell you. I would tell you that if I was in your shoes, if I was sitting in one of those chairs, what would I be thinking about? I would be thinking about compatibility. I think ever since the Dark Ages, your city attorney has sent you memos on compatibility. And so what would, what, what would I be thinking of about what goes into compatibility? Well, if, if you have people testifying and, and no traffic study done by the, the staff, and you have people telling you this is a traffic nightmare, then you've got to presume that is a big incompatible issue there. And I dare say that maybe, maybe on hindsight, if the, if the planners, the plan department had, had done, had thought about this traffic issue a little bit more, maybe they would have done a traffic study, and maybe if they'd done that traffic study, then they would have come out with a no, will not, will not be in favor of this, a no vote on it. So I would say, and also in regard to compatibility, if you have, I have talked to a developer and a home builder in the last few days, and they tell me that they've lost two sales and they're losing more sales in, in the surrounding areas because of this proposed development. Somebody wondering, does that not scream compatibility? Doesn't that tell, tell you that there's people out there with their dollars that are voting? This is not compatible. I think I just heard that there are maybe a thousand-plus people that have emailed and called and talked to you, all of you, and especially, especially these two gentlemen on the end, because it's their ward, and saying they don't want this. And there's two or three that have come forward and said they're for it. I think that is a mark of compatibility as well. There's a bunch of people out here that either are shy, or they're terrified of you city council members or something. I'm not sure which it is. Or maybe they're just respectful of your time, but they have not gotten up here. But I, I'll ask, can I get a hand on who believes this is not compatible? This project is not compatible?
Okay.
Do you have any questions for any of these neighborhood associations that I represent? I'd be more than glad to try to answer them.
Any questions, Mr. Rhodes, on this? All right. Thank you, Robert. Who else would like to address us on this?
Hi. My name's Amanda Craig, and I live at twenty-three seventy-two Crane Court, which is right off Dean Solomon Road. And I don't have anything new or earth-shattering to talk about and tell you about that you haven't already heard about. A passing glance at this proposal and a passing glance at Dean Solomon Road will tell you with a little bit of common sense and a little bit of logic that this doesn't make any sense. I, along with my fellow residents, I'm not opposed to development on this property. I just want it to be done in a responsible way, in a way that makes sense, in a way that's safe. And this, this rezoning proposal, as it stands today, is all about headcount. That's the reason that the Lindsay company has come forward and wanted to do this development, is because they can get this headcount that they need to make, the profit that they need to make. And that headcount doesn't make any sense with infrastructure that we currently have on this road, and I've heard nothing that contradicts or assures me that that infrastructure is going to be fixed. It's not a walkable area. This proposal will not make it a walkable area. It's not a bikeable area. This proposal will not help it to become a bikeable area. Dean Solomon Road is extremely dangerous. I don't recommend anyone biking on that road if they value their life. I don't recommend anyone walking on that road if they value their life, because half of it doesn't have sidewalks, half of it's crumbling down and crumbling away. It's extremely dangerous and already as it is, and cannot support the residents that already live on the road, and we're talking about increasing the number of, of cars that are going to be on that road dramatically. And I would just like to remind everyone that it was said at the first Planning Commission meeting, that West Fayetteville deserves better, and I completely agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address us on this? Okay, I'm going to bring you back to the council. All right. What's the wishes of the council? Who would you all like to start off? Alan, you want to start off, or John, or whoever? Somebody?
Mayor, I, I don't mind starting. I have, I've struggled with this decision, because I generally have been supportive of Lindsay development, and, but I just am feeling that I'm not going to be able to be supportive of this development for the exact reasons that you've heard tonight. Number one, the drainage, the flooding issues. I did speak with, with Mr. Jarrett and ask him for the possibility of some bills of assurance regarding low-impact development. And as you're aware, we did not get those, and so I think that is a, to me, that's probably the, well, I won't say the biggest issue, because I know the traffic and the infrastructure problems are huge, and I hear no commitments from anyone about any infrastructure improvement. And so, and I don't even know if there's been any studies done about, as I, as I heard several of the residents speak, it's almost like, I'm not sure what it is, but, well, I'm sure there's something we can do, but I don't know what it is at this point, and I haven't heard any commitment to that. And I, I just think there are other places, other parts of town where property is available where the traffic is not so bad, and I can, I can show them some places in Ward Four. And, and as, as our last speaker said, we don't need to do this to Ward Four. The traffic is already just unbelievable. And so, you know, I know, I understand about the traffic count on Dean Solomon, but we have to keep in mind, it's a very narrow, and it's a very short, and it has on... and it has on each end of it two intersections that are pretty difficult. So those are the reasons that I, um, do not feel that I can support this, um, uh, particular development. And, you know, I certainly don't ignore the fact that the owner of the property would like to sell the property. And I would like for him to be able to do that. And I would like for Mr. Lindsay and his, uh, group to be able to build apartments, but just don't feel like that I can, um, agree with this location. Thank you.
Okay, now everybody else, we still on second reading?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, yeah, yes, Mark?
This is sort of timely. Last night, the mayor and I and several city staff attended a, uh, stormwater management consortium meeting for Northwest Arkansas. And we understand that there is peril in managing the stormwater runoff at the headwaters of the creeks here in our city. This is the headwaters of Claber Creek. The higher you go, the more important it is to manage that runoff. And just as, uh, we've heard this evening, there are ways to manage it with low-impact development. And we, if we had a bill of assurance for low-impact development, we do have engineering standards, but it's our engineering standards that we have currently do not guarantee that there's low impact at the headwaters that we have to manage in the long run. And with new standards proposed by ADQ and EPA, we don't know what we're going to have to meet in the future and how we're gonna have to treat that. Currently, all stormwater in the city of Fayetteville runs directly off of the impervious surfaces, uh, surfaces into a drainage system directly into the creeks. We do have engineering standards to stop the velocity. But we're going to have more demands on us in managing the quality of the water as it goes into the streams. What makes this particular area so sensitive is it's a bowl. And so it's getting the headwaters into Claber Creek. And so I, I can't, I cannot feel comfortable in voting for this primarily as the, I'm chairman of the Water, Sewer, Solid Waste Committee, and it's primarily knowing what we're going to be facing in the future and managing the nutrients and the, uh, uh, runoff and the erosion and the fact that it would go right from impervious surfaces into a pipe into Claber Creek. So that's something that we have to talk seriously about when we're looking at zoning in the future. And that's why form-based codes are so important. And it's going to be more important that we develop our codes to meet the management of these, these expectations of state and federal, uh, guidelines that we don't even have right now, but we know they're coming along. We had, we had an audit already this past year, and we did well on it. But that doesn't mean that we're going to meet standards in the future because we're getting fair warning in these meetings that the standards are going to be very tough to meet in the future. So I just, I, I want development. I want good infill. I want low-impact development. And I think that that's what we're going to have to look responsibly, uh, in manage, managing, especially the headwaters of these creeks that are going into our, um, watershed, um, as we move forward. There is not necessarily added cost. It's a paradigm shift in managing the development of the land. And there is, as Jeremy said, there's more and more, uh, 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 patterns that are already in place in other communities that we can look at in the future that are not expensive. It's just a paradigm shift in the way we look at engineering. So I can't support it the way it is, and I wanted to be clear because this will give the opportunity for anyone that wants to develop this at this density to come back with a bill of assurance with low-impact development. So I would, I do want them to come back. I do want them to come back with a, a plan that I can support that will not impact the headwaters of these, uh, creeks that run through our city. So that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, Sarah?
I'd like to second Mark's comment, um, regarding the watershed. Uh, and, and that is ultimately the reason why I cannot support the proposal as it stands. Um, you know, I like the idea of the neighborhood services along Dean Solomon Road. I would take issue that it's not bikeable. I bike it all the time. And I'd like the idea of having a little more density along that corridor as well as some variety of housing types. I'd love to see a PVD proposing, um, row houses all up and, uh, down that street with accessory dwelling units in the, in the back to provide some apartments. Because, you know, the reality is we have a lot of low-wage jobs developing along this corridor. And if we're going to have low-wage jobs, we have to have low-cost housing. And oftentimes, that is apartments as accessory dwelling units. Um, but I do hope that, uh, the developer will come back with another proposal with a bill of assurance or submit this as a PVD so that we can fine-tune the stormwater issue because we absolutely must protect our watershed.
Okay, Jess?
Um, I struggle with this one quite a bit because, uh, a few years ago, we had a piece of property that, uh, I made a huge deal about that the owner should be able to sell, uh, his property, and it turned into apartments. Big difference in where that was and the connectivity in and out of those places, uh, that, that is totally not here. At first glance, I said that same thing to myself. I said, "Well, this, this, this is a longstanding family and owner. They've done the right thing. They deserve to sell it." Then I spent a little time out there, and I went to the north end, uh, of that intersection out by where the Wheelers used to live, and, and it's terrible. And adding, adding, uh, hundreds and hundreds of cars to that doesn't make it any better. I am convinced that this can be developed. And if there's a developer out there that, that cares, I would be in support of some sort of development. Uh, and I believe that, that, uh, you know, RSF four or something can be done here. This is a beautiful piece of property. I mean, it is, it has got trees. It's got, uh, a gradual slope. It's got retention ponds. I have a seven iron sitting at the bottom of one of those ponds that was planted there in nineteen ninety-two. Uh, but seriously, it is, well, I'm serious about that. But the, um, the, the watershed that's there, the, the, the natural, uh, preserve that is there, it's just a gorgeous place. And if you could, if you could live there in a home near the trail system, uh, and, and be in that part of town, I think it, I think it will be developed. I hate it for the owner, um, of this property that, that he can't take advantage of this opportunity to sell his land. I am very hopeful that someone will invest enough to, uh, to make this work at some point. This particular, um, zoning I can't agree with. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Yes, Sarah?
Um, I propose we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
There's a motion to say we can go to the third and final reading. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Ma- Marsh, no. Wait, I'm, wait, are we on?
You made a motion.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. I thought we were voting on the proposal. Sorry, I've got the flu. Yes, to the third reading.
Kenyon?
Do I get to say why I'm doing this?
Well, sure.
Okay. I th- I'm gonna vote no. I don't wanna go to the third and final reading because I want the developer to have the opportunity to come back with a better bill of assurance. So I'm gonna vote no.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tannen?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
In order to rezone that property described in rezoning petition, RZM fifteen dash fifty-two forty for approximately one hundred and twenty-eight acres located at twenty-five fourteen West Lori Road from RA Residential Agricultural, RSF one residential single-family, one unit per acre, and RSF four residential single-family, four units per acre, to RA Residential Agricultural, RMF twenty-four residential multifamily, twenty-four units per acre, NC Neighborhood Conservation, and NS Neighborhood Services, subject to a bill of assurance.
Okay. What are the final comments we got? Yes, Alan?
I'll just say that I, I appreciate it, and that's one reason I didn't wanna speak first. I wanted to listen to the perspectives of all the council members we had, particularly Mark from the water and sewer perspective, and Adella working with developments and being on the council for so long. Um, and, Mark, I appreciate your comment that you'd like to wait for a second bill of assurance. Um, but seeing as that we can't really ask for those, I'd just like to wrap this discussion up and let them come back forward with something else. I've worked pretty hard with a lot of my constituents, and we have a lot of wonderful people here in the room tonight that have been very good about communicating, um, and doing so in a concise manner, being respectful of everyone's time, um, and like we did at the last meeting. And I just, I really appreciate, appreciate all the time they put into this. We had over forty people at our Ward Four meeting last night, which was probably a record turnout. So, um, I won't be supporting this, obviously, because I've heard from so many different people, flooding, infrastructure, it's just too much for this area. Um, and it's already a problem, and I hate to see that be compounded by adding that element of RMF twenty-four and the location that's being used. And Sarah, I appreciated your comments earlier about the row housing there. Um, I think that could be very attractive. And there's already an element of row housing one, um, major collector street over on Salem Road. I actually lived in one for a very long time there. So I think that that would be, um, something that we could look at, um, if it fit within zoning. But anyway, all that to say, I won't be supporting this tonight, but I appreciate hearing all the comments from the council for what may be in the future.
Okay, anybody else? Everybody good? All right. There's no other final comments. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Marsh, no.
Kenyon?
No.
Teddy?
No.
Tannen?
No.
Schottmar? Latier?
No.
Long?
No.
Gray?
No.
Okay. Thank you all very much. All right, number two. No two men, seventy-two point five eight.
I thought that might answer.
About to be Tom. All right. Now, number two. Thank you, council, by the way. Number two, in order to amend seventy-two point five eight off-street parking facilities, rules, and rates to limit the mayor's authority to assign any city-owned paid parking lots, on-street paid parking spaces, or the closure of city streets for the use of a permitted special event for not more than two days per year without express approval of the city council. I will entertain a motion to go to the second reading.
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion to say we can go to the second reading. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Teddy?
Yes.
Tannen?
Yes.
Schottmar?
Yes.
Latier?
No.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
In order to amend section seventy-two point five eight off-street parking facilities, rules, and rates, and subject to M, to limit the mayor's authority to assign any city-owned paid parking lots, on-street paid parking spaces, or the closure of city streets for the use of a permitted special event for not more than two days per year without express approval of the city council.
Okay. Steph, or Sarah, please.
Um, yeah, hang on, I'm trying to get my notes open. All right, well, um, I'll come back to that. But, um, so what precipitated this was I was approached by a local business owner, um, Mr. Kerry Arcega, um, with a petition of over eight hundred signatures of people who were concerned about our large, a certain, uh, our large event policy and how it was affecting his business. Um, and also, after having attended the Destination Downtown Conference put on by the Arkansas Main Street Program, they talked a lot about responsible tourism. Um, and one of the, uh, I wish my notes would've been here. Sorry. Give you a minute.
Okay, you're welcome.
Yeah, one of the, um, workshops that we attended was put on by Edward McMahon of the, he's a senior fellow at the Urban Land Institute. Um, he wrote an article that was published in Virginia Town and City called Responsible Tourism: How to Preserve the Goose That Lays the Golden Egg. Um, and he, in that, he quotes, "The impacts of tourism can be beneficial if planned and managed or extremely damaging if left without control." Um, and in review from last time, we talked about Fort Lauderdale and how it had become the spring break capital of America. Uh, I'm gonna read from his article where he discusses this. He says, "City officials thought it would be a great idea to invite millions of college kids to come down for a few weeks each year. What they didn't count on, of course, was that college kids would spend six to eight, or would sleep six to eight per room. The only thing that they would spend money on was beer, and the city had to hire all kinds of extra police and cleanup, cleanup crews. Um, and pretty soon, Fort Lauderdale had a reputation as an out-of-control town full of drunken college kids. Well, today, Fort Lauderdale is no longer the spring break capital. Um, it may not have as many tourists as it used to, but the tourists that do come are older and more affluent. They sleep two people to a room. They dine at fancy restaurants and shop in high-end stores. The city doesn't need to hire extra police and cleanup crews. Responsible tourism is lower volume, lower impact, but higher yield." Um, and I think that this is a question that we're seeing arise because the reality is that we do have a multi-day event that many people in our community consider very disruptive. Um, and this is to non-participants in the event. A lot of people are leaving town for this. Uh, the downtown businesses are having issues with access or noise that prevents them from conducting business as usual. And I think that it's time that we take a look at these events that are larger than your typical weekend festival, that have the potential to disrupt the normal course of business, um, as well as become synonymous with the reputation of our community, and that perhaps it's time to have an additional vetting process for these large, multi-day events. Um, you know, last time we had, uh, one of the event organizers admit that now this event in question is too big to stop. And I have to ask, is this healthy? Is this wise? And are we, as a governing body, doing, uh, the governing body of this city, doing our due diligence, protect the quality of life in our community as it pertains to large festivals? Um, so as we go, um, about considering this tonight, um, I want us to think about, should our citizens have a voice in our events policy? And that's what this ordinance is designed to do. As well as should our city have a vetting system in place for festivals before they grow large enough to significantly impact our quality of life or the day-to-day conduction of business, or become synonymous with our reputation? At what point should there trigger, should it trigger some sort of an additional oversight mechanism? And going back to Ed McMahon's, um, organization, he talks about mass-market tourism is high-volume and big crowds. It's high-impact, overtaxing the police, cleanup crews, infrastructure, and damaging local resources. It's low-yield with little money spent locally by tourists. It offers homogenized artificial experiences, and it draws few repeat visitors. Responsible tourism is lower volume, smaller crowds. It's lower impact, and it preserves the natural and material resources. It is less stress on traffic and police and cleanup, cleanup crews. It has a high yield. The tourists spend more money in our local shops, in our restaurants, in our hotels. And it offers authentic, unique experiences that accentuates the local character and heritage, as well enjoys, as enjoys a devoted audience of repeat visitors, and the best marketing tool is a positive word of mouth. There was some discussion last time about the scope of the ordinance, and I do want us to go ahead and cover our entire city, not just our down area, downtown area, because I think everyone's quality of life is important. So I would like to put forth the amendment, um, that Pitt passed around, uh, earlier, and I believe this was emailed out to us on the eighteenth. So everyone has had time to, um, review it. Uh, but basically, um, it just extends the scope of the ordinance to the entire city and not just limiting it to the downtown. Um, it does exempt events such as the Fayetteville Farmers Market or, um, the First Thursday because these are authorized by separate areas of our city ordinance. Um, so those are not covered by this event ordinance. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions, Sarah?
Yes, Alderman woman, Alderman woman Marsh, I have a question.
Yes.
I can speak English. I'll break my loan. I'll break my long, my long silence, Mayor. Why do we give special treatment to these three groups? Why do they get special ordinances and no one else does? Is that equal protection of the law? Is that, is everyone equal here in Fayetteville? Or do some people get preferred treatment, like these three groups? Why do these three groups get a special ordinance so they're exempt from your ordinance? Why don't we exempt everybody?
They were already exempt by previous ordinance.
Well, we're the, we're the city council. We can, we can exempt anybody we want to, right?
Oh, you're asking me. The reason I suggested this, this was not actually suggested by Alderman Marsh, but when she said she wanted to expand it citywide, one reason I hadn't expanded beyond the entertainment district, because I knew that we had other established groups that had been authorized by city council ordinances and put into the Fayetteville Code to operate along the square for the Farmers Market several days a week, and on Saturdays, closing several streets. And that had been authorized after a long discussion for the city council and public discussions. And so, that was already in our code of ordinances. And so, we certainly did not need to go back and try to change that or have a conflict within our code between the code authorizing them to do that and this code that might question about whether they could do that. The same is true with First Thursday, Friday, which was also authorized by the Fayetteville City Council several years ago. And it also does include closing some streets around the square, not in the entertainment district, but around the square. And Lights of the Ozark also, which has been going on for well over a decade, getting larger, and again, has semi-closure of the streets a little bit, they have, you know, or parking, parking spaces along the square. And I just felt like we should acknowledge that because the city council, for the last decade or more, has already authorized these particular festivals, and that they should not necessarily then have to come and be reauthorized by the city council every year for that, because their impact is limited primarily to the square. It's, it's not a week at a time, it is instead only during the night for Lights of the Ozark, it's only during certain hours, primarily on Saturdays for the Farmers Market, and of course, only on the First Thursday, for First Thursday. So, these were different in type and kind, and therefore, I felt like, just to be clear, and so there would be no conflict within our code, we should expressly recognize the fact that they will not have to comply with any of the permit requirements that are placed on them in this particular code section.
So, Kit, when those were authorized by code, they went through the same process in terms of having the three readings in front of the city council, and so, we're essentially applying the same vetting process to other large-scale events that were, was already applied to those events.
Mr. Mayor, I cannot support any ordinance that will discriminate against certain groups and preference for other groups.
Okay. Um, anybody got anything else before we open it up to public comment?
Okay, we need to hear the amendment. I mean, we need to talk about.
Oh, I apologize, you're absolutely right.
And have some discussion on the amendment and the impact.
Okay.
Sure. Kit, did you want to read the amendment?
Well, there needs to be a motion and a second to make the amendment, and I should, and I will read, and I will only read the section one, the initial part, the whereas clause is the same, the section, the authoritative language has changed.
Okay, so that the section one, can you help me with this? I'm sorry, I'm, I've got the flu and I'm on cold medicine.
I just need a motion to amend the ordinance to what is before the city council tonight, and also, the first thing on your agenda that comes up on your, on your iPad.
I move that we amend the ordinance to what was passed out and what was the first section on the iPad. Do you want me to read that?
No, just need a second, then I'll read it.
All right. But we need, don't they need to know what they're seconding?
We have.
Go here, second. Okay.
So, without a second, then we're still on the original one?
Okay, yes. All right, and which I just think is, you know, as we look to attract more residents to our downtown and a greater variety of businesses, we need to have more oversight over these events. So, that was the intent of this ordinance. And I don't know if Mr. Arcega appears, if he was the impetus for this, if he would like to speak.
Okay, that'll be fine, Mr. Arcega, if you'd like to speak to the council.
So, we're still at the ordinance that does.
We got the original.
To the, to the entertainment district only.
I got it.
Thank you, Kerry Arcega, local business owner. I'd just like to read something that I, I wrote early in the day. This is an ordinance that asks the city council approval when an event wants to grow from two days to three. Many people are saying that this ordinance was started to kill Bikes, Blues and Barbecue. That was not, nor is not, now, my intention. There are many positive events that bikes, there are many positive effects that Bikes, Blues and Barbecue has in our community, and I certainly recognize that. The increases in tax dollars our city takes in and donations to charities are positive and admirable. But one of the assumed benefits is not true. There's a commonly-held belief by many in town that this event is a boon to all downtown businesses. The assumption is that with so many down, people downtown, it must obviously help the overwhelming majority of us. While there are many merchants on Dixon Street that greatly benefit from this event, if an economic study was, were done, it would discover that the vast majority of downtown businesses are financially hurt. Many even close their doors. In my particular business, I have to cut back staff and leave, you know, let people go because business drops sixty percent. I've also spoken with many business owners up and down the length of Seventy-One B. They also agree that it's, that is true for them. I started the petition because I didn't want the city to approve a similar event without citizen input with the idea that they were helping downtown merchants. An offshoot of this event, Bikes, Babes and Bling, wanted to do that a few years ago. We don't mind taking a hit for the greater good of Fayetteville, but please be aware that there is a disproportionately large cost to some of the smallest and most vulnerable businesses in our town. Small businesses and residents don't have a marketing firm that can hire, they can hire to get their story told. We depend on an open, accessible and transparent government to help us in that process. Bikes, Blues and Barbecue is a tremendous asset to our community, but we have to be able to discuss the negative as well as the positive impacts of it as we are going to make, if we're going to make better informed decisions as we move forward in the future. I believe if this ordinance had been in place, as Bikes, Blues and Barbecue was growing, some of the current issues could have been addressed. Right now, there is no public input in the permitting process. That's why I introduced the ordinance. We just witnessed here tonight what happens when someone wants to rezone a piece of property. For that to happen, our city allows citizen input and requires city council approval. Both sides are heard, then an informed decision is made by the council. Even if you lost, you at least had a chance to make your case. Can you imagine the frustrate, excuse me, the frustration and anger there would be if the mayor alone, without citizen input, made that decision? In the case of a major event, the city is granting free access to public property for at least three days. An event such as that has the potential to have a tremendous impact on the businesses and residents in that area. Why shouldn't we be afforded the same rights as the residents in the neighborhood where a piece of property is being rezoned? I know that if you had a business in Fayetteville, and the city wanted to close the streets or parking lots in front of your business, that you would want to at least have a say-so in front of a governing body. I don't want to make this, I don't want this ordinance to pass if it's not good for Fayetteville. But I have yet to hear a compelling reason not to allow citizen input. I have heard some, some concerns about this ordinance from people as I've talked to them around, you know, at different meetings, your meeting last night. A gentleman told me he thought this might be an example of overregulation. I'm a business owner, I understand not wanting to be overregulated. I was careful when this ordinance was being drafted, that it not include every event or festival that wants to come to Fayetteville. Most events start off as a one- or two-day affair. This ordinance would not affect them at all. In some cities, three-day events are referred to as legacy events. Legacy events help to define a community, and I believe that an event should not be granted a legacy status without ever having citizen input. Another comment I heard was that this process is best handled by the mayor. But our form of government dictates that our city council is the representative of the people, and it is through that, and it's through them that our will is manifest. The mayor's job is to carry out the everyday business of the city by overseeing the different departments that render services to our residents. When someone wants to rezon a lot, the mayor doesn't make that decision. The decision to have a major event in Fayetteville should not be just a permitting process. It seems reasonable to require such an event to have city council approval. In the end, all this ordinance is about, in the end, that's all this ordinance is about. This is a very reasonable and measured request. It sets a precedent that the right to have a major event in Fayetteville is in the hands of elected officials and not merely a permitting process. It gives us a proactive tool that is democratic-friendly and will help Fayetteville manage future festivals and rallies. Thank you.
I don't have any questions, Arcega. Yes.
This is gonna come as a surprise to some individuals, but I'm going to offer it anyway. This is being presented as an off-street parking facilities and rules type change in our ordinance. And I would like to amend this to read that it goes to the Transportation Committee with the opportunity to be appealed to city council. This is more in line with the way that we handle our zoning, by having a planning commission that is very informed of the implications, and so, that's what I would like to offer.
Okay, I want to be sure I got this. So, Mark, you're offering an amendment to send this to the transportation, in the process, to Transportation Committee first.
Right, and if there needs to be an appeal, then it can be appealed to city council.
Uh, with, okay, I just have a question.
Well, because right now, we do have the appearance, and we know this from all the correspondence we're receiving, that this is a Bike, Blues and Barbecue killer. Come on, let's be honest, is that not what eighty percent say?
I think that this is not about killing Bikes, Blues and Barbecue. I think this is about taking an event and reining it in.
Did you ask me my opinion? Let me give me my opinion, then you can come back, okay?
Okay.
In order to take that implication out of it, and if we want this to be an off-street parking facility ordinance, then we should give this opportunity to a committee that manages our transportation. So, that's my argument.
Mark, can I ask you a question? Is that permitted?
I want to have a second.
He didn't have a second, Kent. Let's see if he gets a second.
I have a question.
Uh, can we discuss it before we get a second on it, Kent?
I think right now, it's just a general idea. I'm sure I have nothing drafted.
Okay, Alan, go ahead.
Because I had a similar idea, Mark. I had an idea that it could, it could closely mirror the appeal process that the Planning Commission has, where a city council member could appeal, within one week's time, any permit to the entire city council. And my concern with the amendment that you're offering is that the Transportation Committee only meets once a month, whereas the city council meets twice a month.
Well, Transportation Committee can call a meeting anytime they want to by the chair.
They can, but with our, with our schedules, it can be difficult. I don't know, I'm just putting that out there. I like, I like your idea.
I'm just trying to take the implication out that we're targeting an event.
I, I agree.
Well, in further of that, as long as we're gonna discuss a motion without a second, Mayor, let's just talk about it.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Kenyon, if you want to take the idea that we're targeting a specific event, why don't we exempt that event? That would solve the problem right there. Let's just exempt Bikes, Blues and Barbecue. Just put them up there on that pedestal with Farmers Market and First Thursday and everything else we like.
I thought you wouldn't approve of that.
I don't like it.
Oh, okay.
But as long as we're gonna do it.
Oh, I can't say that, okay.
As long as we're gonna do it, let's go all the way. That would solve the problem. If, if what you're offering, Mark, is really to relieve this pressure on Bikes, Blues and Barbecue, let's just go all the way and say they're exempt.
Well, perhaps we should send this to the Ordinance Review Committee for further review.
I would support that.
I would.
I think that's relatively good.
That's fine.
Excellent.
Well, then I move we send it to, to Ordinance Review.
I second that.
Well, let's see. Hang on, everybody. I suppose we should get a little public comment before we.
Uh, Mr. Kenyon, I don't, I didn't really hear an official motion from you, I heard a comment, so.
There was a comment.
Okay, so that was not a motion, right?
There is a, a motion on the floor to send this to Ordinance Review.
Right, that is, I was trying to just make sure we were right procedurally. So, that's the only motion on the floor right now is to refer to the Ordinance Review Committee.
Yes.
Okay, so procedurally, the only thing we're going to discuss is?
Well, you should, that, decide that motion first, and then we kind of see how that, how that goes before we do anything else.
All right. All right. Everybody got that? I think I do now.
We have a second? Yes.
Yes.
Who, what's the first and who is the second?
I made the motion.
And then Mark seconded. Okay. Any other discussion on that? All right. Sandra, would you please call the row?
Marsh?
Yes.
I have.
To send it to Ordinance Review?
Yes.
I think I would have.
All right. So, you want to take public comments whether they send it to Ordinance Review?
And I have a point of view also that I'll mention.
Okay. All right, let's take some public comment on whether it's gonna go to the Ordinance Review or not, from the public. Who would like to be first?
My name is Laura Phillips, I live at two zero five five South Klein. I think it's a lovely idea to send it to Ordinance Review because there are so many questions that we're all chattering about in the audience, like, my kids look forward to three events every year. They look forward to Farmers Market, which closes down the square. They look forward to Trick or Treating on the Square, which closes down the square. And look forward to the Pride Parade, which is a parade, and their rainbows, it's fantastic. And my concern is that we would have to apply for that every year, which would be tedious and would run into, well, maybe we don't do that this year because it, we've closed down Block Street too many times, or we've done whatever. So, yeah, send it to Ordinance Review, hash it out a little bit more, get the Transportation Committee talking about it, and go from there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We also would like to comment on whether we send it to Ordinance Review or not. Stay on the topic of whether we want to send it to Ordinance Review or not, please.
Yes, and that was my question. I'd like for you to restate what that means.
Well, essentially, the Ordinance Review Committee was, was originally formed after we had noise ordinance arguments back in the nineties and many wonderful meetings.
Yes.
And so, we had a committee that could meet more informally, of about four members, and we finally hashed out a possible compromise and solution. And because of that, it was decided we should have a noise ordinance review, I mean, an Ordinance Review Committee for an issue like this, which is complicated, lots of arguments on both sides, lots of different issues, where four aldermen can sit down and talk about it, they can take public comment if they want to, they don't have to, but they certainly can, and then try to come up with something that they can then present to the city council as a possible solution and compromise. So, usually, it's held at three twenty-six, it's at the call of the chairman, and that, anybody else want to explain further on that?
Well, I think that sums it up rather well.
So, what, what you're saying, then, okay, is that what you are deliberating on right now is to send this to the Ordinance Review Board, is that correct?
Yeah, and all the ideas that everybody seems to be having in all the amendments and then.
Bravo.
Then, then, everybody.
Thank you.
Thrash it out there.
Ask your question.
Now, hang on, hang on. Let, let me get the rest of the public comment here. Is there any other public comment on whether we need to send it, I mean, whether you want to comment on whether it goes to Ordinance Review or not?
Mr. Mayor, please, you have another counsel, Kenneth Morton. I certainly have no objection to going to the Ordinance Review, because I think that, you know, we feel comfortable with it. The only situation we have that may put us in a situation where we have to do something else is that we're right now in the process of taking deposits for vendors, et cetera, and vendors are planning trips at this time. And we're at a point that unless the ordinance does it, probably, I'd say, fairly soon, and we get back before this board, we probably at the point that maybe some of you won't, that we maybe have to shift north. Because we cannot, these vendors, these people that bring bigger events in, plan way out in advance, and I run the basic numbers that there's a substantial amount of sales tax that'll be lost. I'm sure you'll still get the sales tax on, on Dixon. But, and we're not threatening, but the problem is, you put us in a liability situation because this came up late. situation because this came up late, and these people plan anywhere from six to nine months out in advance. And if we suddenly have to change them, you know, it changes the size of their displays, the size of their booths. And, you know, I would ask that you consider maybe approving it and taking it to Ordinance Review on the next year and get it done before the event this year.
So you're opposed to going to Ordinance Review?
Well, I'm not opposed to going to Ordinance Review in the long run, Mr. Mayor. I'm just trying to...
Oh, but you're opposed to it next?
Well, I think if it can get done fairly soon, then we can live with it. We don't oppose it going to Ordinance Review, okay? It's just our concern about the people that we're already signing contracts with on certain locations and what it opens us up, and we've got to notify them if we shift it somewhere else and give them a chance to back out.
So you're okay with it going to Ordinance Review?
Yeah, if it's done fairly quick, yes. We need it quick, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question. Mr. Morton, have you all put your permit in for this year, your application?
No, we haven't. We've never in the past put it in this early, but we'll be happy to put it in. We can put it in probably next year.
Okay, ten seconds.
I'm sorry, it is in. Yes, it is in.
Okay, it is in?
Yes.
Okay. Well, there probably won't be any action taken on it until this council makes a decision one way or the other.
I understand that, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Hang on. Is there any other, did you want to say something?
I just wanted him to know.
Well, come on up, introduce yourself.
Tommy Sizemore, my address is 18588 Robinson Road, Fayetteville, Arkansas. I'm the new executive director for Bike Blues and Barbecue. We have put in our permit, I just wanted him to know that. The only problem with it going to Ordinance Review is, we feel like the current system works quite well. We're, we know that in this age that people are able to contact the mayor, and if they're not, they're able to talk to their alderman, who is then able to talk to the mayor. Whenever we put forth that application, then it is vetted by so many city offices that everybody has input to come back to it. We just don't see any reason to change the current.
Well, I understand it, but right now, what we're trying to discuss here, Tom, is whether it goes to Ordinance Review. I just got to keep you on path here, Ken.
Can I ask?
Yes, I think John had a question, and then Justin.
Well, I just want to make the point, Mayor, when we inject risk, now, Mr. Morton and Mr. Sizemore have to make business decisions, and they now don't know if they'll be able to be in Fayetteville, and it injects an element of risk into the decision-making process. And it stifles their ability to function, and that's what Mr. Morton is pointing out to this council. If we're going to take a week or two and get it in front of Review, in Ordinance Review, and then come back and kick it around some more, meanwhile, he's got deals that are going stale, and he can't sit around and let those go stale. He's got to...
I don't disagree with you, John.
Exactly. So we need to, well, number one, I would say, I don't see the big need. I think the mayor has an open office, I think you have an open-door policy, I think people talk to you all the time. You hang around the square during Farmer's Market days. I mean, you're available. If the mayor's office or if our bureaucracy or the people who make the decisions on these permits are not doing a very good job, public has an ample opportunity to voice their opinions in that. I'm not sure why we have to go through this process to inject this risk into these businessmen's lives and make their deals go stale. So I want us to move quickly. And I'd say to our chairman of the Review Committee, I can meet tomorrow.
Well, of course, we know we have two weeks in between the readings, and then the Ordinance Review can meet pretty quick, and then it could be here by the next meeting.
Good. And we'll have to elect a new chair at the meeting. Not because, not because it wouldn't meet, but every year we have to elect chairs to our committees, that's what I'm saying.
I shouldn't know...
Not that I don't welcome it.
Until this ordinance is actually amended, the current code section is in effect with the mayor having the power to approve it. And I would think that if a decision is not made by the city council, probably by the next meeting, something tells me the permit's going to be decided by the mayor if this city council does not change the ordinance by the next meeting. That'd be my guess.
I think that's a relatively good suggestion.
With that being the case, I can't meet tomorrow.
You won't?
I want you to make the decision, Mayor.
I'm sure you do, John. I'm sure there's lots of folks who... All right, okay, so here's what I'm thinking. If it goes to Ordinance Review, it should be there pretty quick. Who's on Ordinance Review? John, you're on it, Justin, you're on it, Del, who else? Matthew, okay. You know, get a meeting together as quickly as you can, and then we'll have a decision made by the next council meeting, and this thing will be decided one way or the other.
Do you have a question?
Okay, come on up and introduce yourself, and let's go through the process. Yes, Matt?
I'm Kendall Curley, and I live at 524 West Prospect Street in Fayetteville, and I just have a question.
Sure.
When it goes to Ordinance Review, the decision is made, do you have public comment at that time?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And will that be...
Well, that is actually kind of the decision of the chair of Ordinance Review about whether or not to accept public comment. I would think the chair might, but I'm not going to say the chair will do that.
I would hope that there would be an opportunity for the public to have some input at some point.
And you certainly would have public comment at the city council meeting when whatever they recommend would be proposed.
Okay, that's all I need to know. All right, thank you.
You're very welcome. All right, now, does anyone have any other comments about whether they think this needs to go to Ordinance Review or not? All righty then, I'm going to bring it back to, oh, here comes, come on up, Tom.
Tom, you have to start moving faster.
Yeah, I wish I could. Tom over at 211 North Block. The only comment I will make is to clarify one factual issue, and I wish I could pull up all the materials I have quickly, but I, but, so I may be wrong a little bit in what I'm saying. Bike Blues and Barbecue, I've reviewed all special permit applications for the last four years for everybody, all special events, and not just major events. Bike Blues and Barbecue typically applies in March. The permitting process is typically not finished until, like, August, Mr. Luttrell. So just a factual point that, yes, they've applied this year, but if we weren't even talking about this, it wouldn't be finished until long before they were committed to people anyway. That's all I want to say.
But I kind of remember signing it sometime during the summertime.
Exactly, that's my point.
Well, I mean, Ken, now, everybody gets one turn at the mic, let's council member bring it.
I'll bring him up.
All right.
I just wanted to say that we've never had this issue before, so we've attempted the applications, we've approved the applications, we've done this now for, what, 14 years?
Save in the can?
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get the number of years, and so we've never had this before, so we haven't been concerned about any liability, because it's always been adopted by the city, okay? And I understand there's risk at that. But now we know there's serious risk, so that puts us in a situation that we have to, you know, we need to quit the decision.
Okay. Anybody, come on up. No, wait a minute, no, no, no.
I'll bring Karen up.
Okay, you can come on up, you have a council member bring you up. We'll just keep passing the tongue, I suppose.
Yeah, hey, I mean, well, I'm up here to talk about conflict. Okay, and what I see is conflict, okay, that's been going on, and with Bike Blues and Barbecue, and, you know, they're, they're talking about their contracts and how that impacts the city and your relationship. I've lost, I've lost money every year for 16 years for anywhere from four to seven days, okay, out of my business year. And, you know, I've tried working, okay, with the powers that be, I've tried blending in, I have tried opening my doors, security issues, forbid that now. And, you know, I think everybody, and this is something to think about, everybody in Fayetteville right now has got something to lose, okay? And I know what I've lost, but I would encourage us, you know, to take this back to Review, ask for additional input from the city, and especially the people on College Avenue. It's not just me, it's the people on College Avenue, it's my neighbors and their ability to get to work. So this is a pretty big issue. I appreciate, you know, that they've got contracts pending, but I think, you know, it's important, and she'd get your full consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Yeah, Mark, I think you've had your hand up.
The reason I suggested it go to Ordinance Review is, we have received so many emails and so much correspondence on this that doesn't relate specifically to what we're considering. So obviously, there is a public concern about how we manage this. If I can only look at that information that is applied directly to this ordinance, or as the ordinance says it's amended, which has just been amended, then that's going to take a lot of discussion away from the consideration as I move forward. By taking it to Ordinance Review Committee, we can consider all the input, we've received such good input from all different elements of our community, that I'm hopeful, and we've seen this work in the past, that we can come up with a compromise where there is certainly input from the community, and then there's also a fair balance in the impact of the economy as a whole. And so that's, I hate to delay it, but I think it's the responsible thing to do based on the sheer volume of misinformation that people are perceiving that we're doing in association with what we're presenting. And so this is going to have the opportunity for us to have a clear understanding of what it is that we're passing and what the implications are in the short term and the long term, and all parties will have the opportunity, because we have that in front of us right now, believe you me, we've got an abundance of material to review, and we have reviewed it, those of us that keep tabs on that. So I don't want anyone to think that we're up to any type of trickery or anything, but this is the opportunity to come up with a compromise where there will be input on major inputs, at major events. Is it going to be downtown? Is it going to be the whole city? Is there anyone getting unfair treatment, or is there anyone getting special treatment? All of this can be taken in consideration as we move forward in a fair and open discussion, but not here in the city chamber where we have something in front of us that there is obviously a lot of misunderstanding about. So that was my concern.
I believe Adele and Sarah, and then Matthew, I think.
Well, I think Mr. Morton brings up, one of the points that I had written down is my greatest concern about this ordinance, and that is that if we have to go through this process with every event, with every festival, that group of people does not know how to plan. You know, I don't think these festivals, it's my understanding, they don't just pop up overnight. There's quite a bit of planning that goes into it. And so I think if there's a process, and they don't know if they're going to be approved or not for two days or four days or whatever, that, to me, is the biggest problem that I see with this ordinance in its first, the first reading of it.
Okay. Sarah?
I think, you know, I'm glad that we're sending it to Ordinance Review. Kit and I clearly made our best attempt at this. I do hope as it goes there, you know, I had included some evaluation criteria, such as weighing the potential benefits and detriments to the community, impact of public services, including city, schools, transportation, and medical services, and effect on the overall quality of life to residents and businesses. And I hope these are the sorts of things that come out of that, and it's not an arbitrary, I like this festival, I don't like this festival sort of decision. So I do hope that the committee considers that. But as we continue this conversation in our community, I think it's important that we act like respectful adults. I know we've heard the term tonight, again, we're not threatening. We heard that three times last time, and yet I've got people contacting me, giving me input, and asking me not to use their name because they have been threatened, they've had eggs thrown at their businesses, they said that their employee safety has been threatened. The night after I introduced the ordinance, my mailbox was smashed. This is unacceptable. Bullying is not okay in our community, and let's be adults as we have this conversation and move forward.
Okay. Matthew?
I just wanted to encourage everybody, and especially the other council members, but certainly the members of the audience too, to please, between now and the first Ordinance Review Committee meeting, to please submit your comments as to what specific changes or considerations you would like this ordinance to address. I think right now what we have, despite the attempt to include a list of some things as a catch-all ordinance, you know, and the idea that council approval rests on this kind of catch-all is, I think, the biggest weakness and maybe even the only weakness in the proposal we have today. I know that there are some real issues out there that people are dealing with. I hear about them, you know, regularly throughout the year, and I think that the right approach, and what I hope the Ordinance Review Committee discusses, is addressing some of those specific considerations, rather than using the catch-all that, in the way that it's drafted now. So I know that all along you have some ideas, and I know there are some members of the audience that have ideas. Please send us specific considerations that should be included in event permit applications.
It's fair, and they should be sent not to each other, but to my office, because the FOI doesn't allow you all to communicate outside of public meetings. So send whatever you might want to to my office, and I'll try to compile them and then send them out, so it's not a complication between aldermen outside the public view.
I can share some of mine that I've received as well.
I think we all can.
Yes, Al?
I'd just like to make one comment moving forward. I really hope that we can look at this discussion as a whole, going into Ordinance Review, as not being about one festival. Because if it's about one festival, I don't think we're really taking a fair look at what we're offering to the citizens of Fayetteville. If this is truly an ordinance to look at the way that we permit festivals and to add public comment to discussion, we shouldn't look at this as a Bike Blues and Barbecue ordinance. I just, we should not do that. It should be a fair, generalized discussion of the way that we do our practices in Fayetteville. I've heard a lot of comments, and most of them have something to do with Bike Blues and Barbecue, and that's something that I try to communicate back, that, you know, this is just looking at the Fayetteville Code. So I hope that's how we move forward, because I don't want to send that message to organizations that have contributed so much to the city of Fayetteville over the past that we don't want them in Fayetteville. Because we haven't taken a vote on that, and so I don't want to send that message at the same time. So I just hope that we're fair going through the process.
All right. Any other discussion? I believe we have a motion, Sarah?
Yes.
Send it to Ordinance Review.
Yes.
Any more final comments? All right, Sonora, would you please call her up?
Mark?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Caddy?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Shawmar?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
No. And I'm voting no, simply because I feel that, number one, it's kind of a personal thing, I'm, I have a very busy next month, and I'm not sure when I'm going to meet, and I cannot be at the meeting on the 15th. So our decision will have to be delayed until the first, or I'm asking that our decision be delayed until the first meeting in April, because I definitely want to vote on this very important issue. So that's the reason I'm voting no for it to go to Ordinance Review.
Okay. Well, it passes, right?
Yes.
It did, and since it's going to Ordinance Review, you might as well leave it on the second reading and not go to the third reading.
Okay. All right, let's move on to new business.
And so, Mayor, it will then, can we, can I make a motion then, that we table it until the first meeting in April? What, how do we handle that?
You could, yes, you could make that motion at any time, although, as you heard from the representative of Bike Blues and Barbecue, they're very eager to have the permit process get going so it could be approved one way or the other.
Right, and the mayor can do that, and I'm hoping that he will.
So, but you can make the motion to table it until the first meeting in April. That's appropriate or parliamentary properly.
Okay, I would like to make that motion, please.
Second.
I have a motion second, to hold this decision till the first meeting of April.
Well, yeah, to table this ordinance until the first meeting in April.
All right. What discussion do we have on that? Anything? No? All right, Sonora, would you, oop.
Public should have...
On the tabling?
Well, just like before, let's do the...
All right. What public comment do we have on the tabling till April the 1st?
Yes, no?
Anybody? Okay, I'm going to close it to public comment, bring it back to the council. Okay, I'm going to close it to public comment, bring it back to the council. We have a motion and a second to table until the 1st of April. All right. First meeting in April. Sandra, would you please call the row.
Marsh.
No.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
No.
Kennet.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Lutcher.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. So we will take this up the, in the meantime, we will have an ordinance review committee, and then we'll take this up at the first meeting in April. All right?
Okay.
All right. Thank you all. All right. Under new business. Number one, an ordinance to weigh the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorize the purchase of spare parts for the thermal drying unit located at the BioSolids Management Site from A I T Services Incorporated any amount of $65,371.50 plus applicable taxes to approve project contingency in the amount of $7,174.52, and to weigh the requirements of competitive bidding for future purchase of parts and repair services through December 31st, 2018.
Whereas the thermal dryer located at the city's BioSolids Management Site, which helped save the city approximately $1 million in landfill costs and generated $60,000 in revenue to fertilize ourselves to the public in 2015, currently has no spare parts, and the failure of any one of its critical components could shut down the dryer for as much as six months. And whereas A I T Services Incorporated is the sole provider of replacement parts for the thermal dryer, now therefore being ordained by the City Council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines an exceptional situation exists in which competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical, and therefore weighs requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizes the purchase of spare parts for the thermal drying unit located at the BioSolids Management Site from A I T Services Incorporated in the amount of $65,371.50 plus applicable taxes, and further approves a project contingency in the amount of $7,174.52. Section 2, that the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines an exceptional situation exists in which competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical, therefore weighs requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizes the future purchase of parts and repair services from A I T Services Incorporated through December 31st, 2018.
Okay. Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess as was just discussed, A I T Services is the sole source vendor of the parts for the thermal dryer at the B M S, and there's a six-month lead time on bearings and those type of deals, so we're asking that staff recognizes to approve.
Okay. So questions we have from the City Council?
And this was discussed by Water, Seer, Solid Waste.
Okay.
With urgency.
Okay. Sure. Any other questions for Tim on this? Yes, John.
How do we save money by waiving our bid requirement?
We're saving money by being able to order the parts now from sole source provider. If the thermal drying unit goes down, we have to pay landfill tipping fees for our slugs because it's not dry, and that's where we're saving money.
Then, you know, Tim, the bidding process guarantees that the people of Fayetteville are getting the best price they can on this product or service. Without the bidding, how do we assure the people of Fayetteville we're getting a good deal?
Because there's only one bidder for this product. It's a sole source provider.
Okay. So they have a monopoly on that market?
Yes, they do. On that one, on parts.
So we have no choice?
That's correct.
Right.
Might as well go ahead and accept it.
Yeah. They're the only ones making the part. Right?
Maybe a business opportunity.
Absolutely. Okay. Is any public comment on this? See, now I'll bring it back to the council.
I mean, we've spent the rules in the second reading.
Motion, second, to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Kennet.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Lutcher.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
In ordinance to weigh the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorize the purchase of spare parts for the thermal drying unit located at the BioSolids Management Site from A I T Services Incorporated in the amount of $65,371.50 plus applicable taxes to approve a project contingency in the amount of $7,174.52, and to weigh the requirements of formal competitive bidding for future purchases of parts and repair services through December 31st, 2018.
I move we go to the third and final reading.
Second.
Motion, second, to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the row.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Kennet.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Lutcher.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
In ordinance to weigh the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorize the purchase of spare parts for the thermal drying unit located at the BioSolids Management Site from A I T Services Incorporated in the amount of $65,371.50 plus applicable taxes to approve a project contingency in the amount of $7,174.52, and to weigh the requirements of formal competitive bidding for future purchases of parts and repair services through December 31st, 2018.
Any final comments in the council? All right. Sandra, would you please call the row.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Kennet.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Lutcher.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
In ordinance to weigh the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorize the purchase of spare parts for the thermal drying unit located at the BioSolids Management Site from A I T Services Incorporated in the amount of $65,371.50 plus applicable taxes to approve a project contingency in the amount of $7,174.52, and to weigh the requirements of formal competitive bidding for future purchases of parts and repair services through December 31st, 2018.
Any final comments in the council? All right. Sandra, would you please call the row.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Kennet.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Lutcher.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
In ordinance to weigh the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorize the purchase of spare parts for the thermal drying unit located at the BioSolids Management Site from A I T Services Incorporated in the amount of $65,371.50 plus applicable taxes to approve a project contingency in the amount of $7,174.52, and to weigh the requirements of formal competitive bidding for future purchases of parts and repair services through December 31st, 2018.
I move we go to the third and final reading.
Second.
Motion, second, to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the row.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Kennet.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Lutcher.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
In ordinance to weigh the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorize the purchase of additional laser fish user licenses, the laser fish forms module, annual software maintenance, and future software and service needs through the end of fiscal year 2017 from N C C I L L C in an amount not to exceed $235,000 plus applicable taxes.
I move we go to the third and final reading.
Second.
Motion, second, to go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the row.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Kennet.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Lutcher.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
All right. Number two, an ordinance to weigh the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorize the purchase of additional Laserfish user licenses, the Laserfish forms module, annual software maintenance, and future software and service needs through the end of fiscal year 2017 from N C C I L L C in an amount not to exceed $235,000 plus applicable taxes. Okay. Keith?
Mayor, council, I'd like to co-present this item with Augusta Branham, our web content manager, because part of the item or request tonight is, she was the one that recommended that and very supportive of that. But just to kind of give a summary, is we're purchasing, or the ability to purchase 25 additional licenses to expand what we're currently doing with our document imaging system, which is, as mentioned earlier, is part of our E R P system that we did bid out over the summertime. Purchase a forms module, which will provide us the ability to do both internal and external forms, so with workflow associated with it, so the citizen could submit data onto an online form, route it through the appropriate department, some kind of approval process, and then automatically archive into Laserfish, and then for future software maintenance for both F Y 2016 and 2017, and then as the need arises, purchase up to an additional 60 user licenses to support ongoing needs. These won't be purchased at any one time, but just as we need, as we grow the, our document imaging and archiving program throughout the city, we'll purchase those.
Okay. What questions do we have? Okay. Do we have any public comment on this? Uh-huh. Seeing no, bring it back to the council.
We should spend the rules and go to the second reading.
Motion, second, to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Kennet.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Lutcher.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Okay. Number three, an ordinance to rezone that property described in rezoning petition R Z N 15-5293 for approximately 36.25 acres located at 701 East Huntsville Road from R S F 4, residential single family, 40 units per acre, to C S, community services, N C, neighborhood conservation, and R A, residential agricultural, and, and subject to a bill of assurance. Kit?
Being ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section 1, that the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the property shown on the map, Exhibit A, and the legal description of Exhibit B, both attached to the planning department's agenda memo, from residential single family 4 units per acre to community services, neighborhood conservation, and residential agricultural, all subject to a bill of assurance.
Jeremy.
Evening, Mayor, council. This is a property located on the southeast corner of Morningside Drive and Huntsville Road in southeast Fayetteville. It's currently zoned R S F 4. Approximately a third of the larger parcel, which is about 36 acres, is within our enduring green network. The property is currently developed with a single-family residence and several small agricultural buildings, and is currently in agricultural use. The applicant is proposing rezoning the northern 36 acres, roughly speaking, to three zoning districts. R S F 4 would go to community services, which is about a little under 3 acres. Community services is a form-based zone. It allows for multiple uses, including commercial uses and residential uses. Secondly, about 31 acres is proposed for neighborhood conservation, which is a single-family zoning district, allowing for lots, roughly speaking, density of 10 units per acre maximum. Normally, those lots are around 50 by 100, but that's, that's the minimum size. And then lastly, about 2 acres is requested to be rezoned to residential agricultural. Sort of like the item you saw at the Razorback Golf Course, this zoning district is being utilized by the applicant, along with the bill of assurance to preserve that property in perpetuity with that bill of assurance for green space purposes. The bill of assurance is attached to the ordinance as well. Staff is supportive of this rezoning request. We find it's generally compatible with the surrounding mixture of residential and non-residential uses. If you know this area, Huntsville Road used, used to be a commercial corridor, parts of it were a commercial corridor. It has less traffic now because of 15th Street and the improvements there, but it does still see traffic and small-scale resident, non-residential uses. Therefore, we are supportive of that request. In addition, there is a widely varying densities in this area from the Senior Housing Center, which is a multifamily project off of Morningside Drive, to some duplexes and also larger-scale single-family residences. So we feel like overall this proposal is compatible with the surrounding land use and future land uses planned in this area. Staff did support the request, as did the planning commission with a vote of seven to two.
All right. What questions we have for Jeremy?
Mr. Mayor, even though it sounded like I was sort of reading the ordinance, I got to read Section 2.
Okeydoke.
Section 2, that the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect the zoning change provided in Section 1.
All right. Thank you, Kit. All right. Any questions for Jeremy on this? No? That's y'all's neck of the woods. You heard anything?
I've heard things.
All right. Um, any public comment on this? Okay. Is the applicant here? Okay. All right. Bring it back to the council.
I move we go to the second reading.
Second.
Motion, second, to go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the row.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Teddy.
Yes.
Kennet.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Lutcher.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
In ordinance to rezone that property described in rezoning petition R Z N 15-5293 for approximately 36 and 1/4 acres located at 701 East Huntsville Road from residential single family, 40 units per acre, to community services, neighborhood conservation, and residential agricultural, all subject to a bill of assurance.
Okay. Yes, Al.
I just have a quick question about the bill of assurance. Is it, is it common practice for a testamentary trust to be able to sign a bill of assurance?
The owner is supposed to sign, and I imagine the owner must be the testamentary trust.
It's a different name. That's why I'm asking. The person who signed the bill of assurance is a different name than the trust.
But could be the trustee, though, even if, if.
That's what it says, yeah.
See if I can find that. Okay. Yeah, it says that the person that signed says he's the trustee.
Originally, it is.
Of the Rose Trust, which I think is what, yeah, the Charles E. Rose Testamentary Trust. So if he's the trustee, then he can sign for the trust.
Is it Curtis Hoag that signs?
Yeah. Curtis Hoag is the attorney, and so he probably was the one to set up the trust, and I guess And so he probably was the one to set up the trust, and I guess the owners wanted him to be the trustee. Sometimes an attorney will be the trustee, and so he would be the proper person to sign the bill of assurance.
I just wanted to make sure we were all okay on that because it had Bart Bauer as the initial person with his name marked through, so.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
Anything else? Any other final comments from the council? Saunders, would you please call the row?
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennet.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Latour.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Okay, thank you all. Number four. In order to rezone that property described in rezoning petition RZN 16-5299 for approximately 3.4 acres located at 4170 West Martin Luther King Boulevard from RO Residential Office to UT Urban Thoroughfare.
Being ordained by the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby changes the zone classification of the property shown on the map Exhibit A and the legal description of Exhibit B both attached to the Planning Department's agenda memo from Residential Office to Urban Thoroughfare in Section Two, that the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby amends the official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville to reflect zoning change provided in Section One.
Jeremy. This is approximately three and a half acres located on West Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. It's currently zoned Residential Office. The property was subject to, I believe, four or five rezoning attempts over the past decade or so, or more since 1994, to C1 or C2, all of which were denied by the Planning Commission or City Council. This request is for Urban Thoroughfare, which is one of our form-based zoning districts that does allow for commercial utilization of this property, which is the primary use of the property now. It's had restaurants, a by-conditional use permit, several other uses on this property. In addition, as you all know, Gouple Road is being constructed, currently extended from Persimmon to Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. We'll tie into that Boulevard and state highway very close to this property. Given that, and given the fact that staff is supportive of this Urban Thoroughfare request, we recommend approval, as did the Planning Commission, a vote of nine to zero, finding that it was compatible rezoning for both existing land uses that have been approved in the recent past and future land uses in this area.
Okay. What questions do we have for Jeremy on this? Okay. What public comment? Is the applicant here?
Representative Ben Israel. My name is Ben Israel. Excuse me. I reside at 4477 West Wade Drive and was contacted by this, the applicant, Calypso Properties, Inc., to help them get it rezoned. There had been several attempts to zone it C1, as was mentioned, and those were all rejected. However, there's only, from Highway 71 business to the edge of the city limits, there's only three properties, actually, there's four small tracts of property that are zoned RO. The rest of it's C1, C2, I1, and Urban Thoroughfare. We discussed it with the owners after we ran into opposition again for the C1, and they agreed to an Urban Thoroughfare designation. We kept running it. We have the property listed to lease, and we kept running into problems having to get conditional use permits. Many times, a potential tenant is in town for a weekend or a week, and he's wanting to get a place leased, and we were running into all kinds of problems, having to delay of being able to lease it until we got conditional use permits. On two sides of this property, there's Urban Thoroughfare zoning, and it's funded by five-lane state highway. There's no residences in the area. There's one, and it's in the Urban Thoroughfare zoning. So we would like you to consider that and help us get it rezoned.
Okay, do we have any questions, Mr. Israel, on this? Okay. Thanks, Ben. All right. What public comment do we have on this? None, I'll bring it back to the council.
I move us go to the second reading.
Second.
Motion to second, go to the second reading. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennet. Schottmar.
Yes.
Latour.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
In order to rezone that property described in rezoning petition RZN 16-5299 for approximately 3.4 acres located at 4170 West Martin Luther King Boulevard from Residential Office to Urban Thoroughfare.
I move us go to the third and final reading.
Second.
Motion to second, go to the third and final reading. Saunders, would you please call the row?
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennet.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Latour.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
In order to rezone that property described in rezoning petition RZN 16-5299 for approximately 3.4 acres located at 4170 West Martin Luther King Boulevard from Residential Office to Urban Thoroughfare.
Any final comments from the council on this? Yes, Sarah?
I would just like to thank the applicant for choosing a form-based zone.
Okay. Anything else? Saunders, would you please call the...
Marsh.
Yes.
Kenyon.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kennet.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Latour.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Okay. Number five. A resolution to express the City Council's intent to consider proposals for the development improvement of the city's 2.8-acre property at the southwest corner of West Avenue and Dixon Street currently used as the West Avenue Parking Lot. Jeremy.
Most of you were here at the agenda session, but for the risk of being redundant, I would like to go through a little bit of the history of this proposal, just to set some context for anyone who may be watching at home, but also for you in your decision-making process. This is a resolution brought forward by the mayor, a resolution of intent in order for you all to consider proposals for development of the West Avenue Parking Lot. For a little bit of history, in the early 1990s, the city developed a 290-space surface parking lot at the southwest corner of Dixon Street and West Avenue. The primary goal of that was to provide parking for the new Walton Art Center that opened in 1992, but also for reviving Dixon Street Entertainment District. The property was first developed in the 1880s as a wholesale grocery store. It remained in the grocery business or use until 1968, when Ozark Grocery Company closed there. Following that closure, the building was utilized for a number of different storage uses along the railroads. It finally burned in 1974. In the 70s and 80s, the lot, which contained a portion of Town Branch Creek traversing the site flowing from northeast corner to the southwest corner, became overgrown with vegetation, as I mentioned at the agenda session. According to reports, it was a place for, quote, "unfavoritized characters and mischievous deeds," end quotes. After the Walton Art Center was completed, the city made the decision to clear the site, fill it in, and construct that parking lot. As many of you know, longtime residents of Fayetteville, Dixon Street was a very different place before the Walton Art Center arrived and began to transform the entertainment district into what we know it is today. Site today, as you look at it, was much like it was last developed in the 1990s. It contains 290 parking spaces, a large underground storm drain system, which carries a portion of Town Branch Creek, and it's also accessed via both Dixon Street and West Avenue. Along the western boundary is Arkansas-Mazury Railroad, still an active freight and excursion passenger train, and the train line, and the Skull Creek Trail, part of the 36-mile Razorback Greenway. A small stone grotto with fish ponds was developed when the parking lot was constructed using stones from the ruins of the Ozark Grocery Building. The water for this pond is actually piped from across West Avenue and from the natural stream occurring underneath the Walton Art Center development. It's also the site for multiple festivals, as we discussed earlier tonight, and outdoor performances throughout the year, the largest of which is the annual Bikes, Blues, and Barbecue Festival. Parking today in this lot draws an annual revenue of approximately $433,000 from daily paid parking tickets and event parking, which we utilize in association with larger Walton Art Center performances. This property was featured and discussed extensively during the development of our downtown master plan, which the council adopted in 2004. It was identified as a, quote, "strategic location for infill developments with a parking garage and mixed uses lining the structure." Concepts were developed during that master planning process through neighborhood shret type of a process to complete the street edges along Dixon Street and also West Avenue, and to create an urban street scene along the southern edge of the lot facing Nadine Baum Studios and the Metro District Buildings. In 2007, the city went through a similar process as what we're discussing today. We issued a request for proposals for a public-private partnership to develop this property. There was a proposal selected and a development agreement negotiated to construct two parking structures and a mixture of retail and commercial liner buildings. However, the construction of that development agreement did not pass our legal review test for a variety of reasons, and about that time, the recession hit our area, our region, along with the rest of the nation and state, and talks on that project ceased. In 2014 and 2015, two major expansions impacting this property began. The city first broke ground on a 235-space parking deck serving Entertainment District along with administrative office building, replacement, and expansion for the Walton Art Center. Last year, the Walton Art Center also began a $23 million expansion and renovation project, which you can see the fruits of that labor currently. Parking deck was completed in October of 2015, and construction on the expansion and renovation is scheduled for completion at the end of this year. In December, this past December, the mayor communicated to you all that he would be bringing to the council a resolution of an intent to determine if you are interested and willing to consider development proposals on the property. As you are aware, the opening of the Spring Street parking deck has increased interest in this particular area because it provides additional parking capacity in the downtown entertainment district. Because of the successful completion of this important piece of infrastructure in the Dixon Street area, the city's received renewed interest from multiple parties in the potential for redevelopment of that West Avenue parking lot. Mayor's office has spoken to a number of interested parties. These proposals vary dramatically, from very small-scale iterative proposals to very large-scale development of the entire parcel. A primary factor that the mayor has relayed in all those meetings, which I've attended, has been to not reduce the parking capacity. Simply because we have a parking garage, we did not build it to replace the West Avenue parking lots, but to enhance the parking capacity that we have downtown. In addition, if the property is to be developed, we want it to be developed according to the downtown master plan and to continue to support the growing arts, entertainment, retail, and residential uses now occurring in our thriving downtown. In an effort to conduct a very open, transparent, and a public process equitable among all parties interested in development of this property, the mayor decided to bring forward this item to you all to get your conversation, get you all involved in the conversation early. After all, Dixon Street's influence and impact is greater than its physical area for residents and visitors alike. Long considered the heartbeat of the region, Dixon Street and the surrounding areas a valuable asset to the city, and development of this property, we believe, should be taken deliberately with all due consideration. Should you be interested in consideration of the development of the property, we are recommending that you pass this resolution of intent. It would give us the charge then to prepare a request for proposals, to get that out on the street, advertise that as much as possible, and then see what interest there really is in proposals for development of property. As I mentioned at the agenda session, the council then can choose to do what you wish. You're landlords of property. You can choose to do nothing with those proposals. You can choose to select one that develops all of it or a portion of it. I think that the sky's the limit in terms of the above all proposals. We will ask for certain questions to be answered, and we'll develop that as part of the RFP. Some of those questions might be how parking is proposed to be replaced or enhanced, how our proposal meets with the downtown master plan, how current festival and event venue spaces is to be managed, proof of financial feasibility, purchase or lease proposals. All of those types of things would be answered as part of the RFP process. We welcome your input and dialogue in this process for this important property in our downtown entertainment district.
Okay. John.
Jeremy, tell us, where's the closest stream in relation to this parking lot?
Closest stream is directly underneath it.
So on one of the edges, that stream comes out, right?
So the stream flows from the intersection of Dixon and West. That's where you can actually, I've been up to that point, and it flows in a southwest manner diagonally, generally diagonally across the property. It is contained underground until it gets to Center Street, and that's where it daylights out. So any proposal's going to have to take that into consideration as they look at development of that property.
Very important stream. We've been talking about not developing other land because there's some streams nearby, and now we're building right on top of one.
No, what we're doing is bringing this study for you to look at, John. If you don't want to...
Well, let's be consistent in the city council.
The, John, I think that it's real important that you bring that up because that is old infrastructure that needs improvement, and this might give us the opportunity for improvement.
Good, but the point is, engineers are pretty sharp, Mark. I mean, anytime we're having development and you bring up the idea that...
I was just saying it's going to give us the opportunity.
Right. Okay, well, good. But let's be consistent, is my point.
Well, you get a chance to be, John, and...
And I'm not saying we're inconsistent, but it just, I'm shocked that we're building right on top of the stream, from what I heard earlier in the night.
This particular case was built over in 1990, I believe.
Yeah, and they've got big rock tunnels actually underneath that.
There's a lot of strength.
That's why I was not real keen on doing an underground deck in that location years ago.
Right.
I didn't think that would work out very well. But what we have, we've had several proposals. People have come to us to want to look at developing that parking lot, and we just simply want to get your input from it, on it, and we will bring you some ideas, and if you don't like any of them, don't do any of them, and if you do, we will. But one thing I want to be consistent with, I didn't go through the paid parking issue and build a deck over there to lose parking spaces. So I'm somewhat dug in on some of that, but if we can develop and we don't lose spaces because it doesn't do you any good to develop an area and you lose spaces, and then we had to build a deck to enhance parking, that doesn't make sense. So what we will look at is proposals that will maintain our parking or something like that, and we'll look at it, and then bring you something. Yes, Matthew, come in, Sarah.
I need a few more minutes to collect my thoughts.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm glad to see this moving forward. I think that that's one of the most valuable pieces of property in northwest Arkansas, and it is underutilized as a parking lot. This is a great opportunity for us to bring new residents and businesses into our downtown, but I do hope as we move forward in this that we reserve space for a regional transit hub because there is a very high likelihood that that is where a regional transit line might run along with the current rail line there. And then I also would like to encourage us to look at, rather than seeing this as one mega project, breaking it into smaller parcels and looking at more of an incremental approach so that we don't end up with one homogeneous architecture down there. If we look at the way that Dixon Street was historically developed, it was in small storefronts, one piece at a time, and that's what gives the architecture an urban fabric richness and contributes to making that the great street that it is. And I also would like to see us give preference to a long-term lease of the property rather than taking that out of the hands of the citizens. I think that selling that property would be very irresponsible for us. So I think those are the things I'm going to be looking for in proposals, but I'm glad to see this moving forward.
Okay. That's nice.
Sure. There's a lot to talk about, but I'll try to be organized. On parking, you know, whenever I voted for the paid parking program, I talked publicly, and some of the other aldermen at the time did as well, and from David Jurgens, we heard a few times that building that parking garage down there was, in the words I used, is it was moving a chess piece out of the way so that we could do something else. And I think the time has come to start talking about what that something else is, so I'm appreciative that we've got the resolution for intent here. And as far as parking goes forward, you know, I can appreciate your stance, Mayor, that you don't want to reduce spaces, and what I would encourage the rest of the council and the mayor to do, and the folks who respond to this proposal, is to look at our parking district as a whole in consideration of that benchmark. It would be very difficult to dial up the knob on this site with regards to parking capacity without having to turn down other knobs with regards to the quality of open space or the quality of the buildings and what they give back to the community. But we do know that if we look across the entire downtown zone, we have some obvious, some glaring inefficiencies in our current parking system. You only have to walk some of the streets with public parking that are on the edges of the district on almost any night, including weekends, and see how virtually empty they are to realize that we have some inefficiencies there. And those inefficiencies are both hardware and software, so some of those are just baked into the policies we have. For instance, the disparity between what happens downtown and what happens down in Dixon as one of several examples. And we also have some hardware challenges, what I call connective tissue. You know, we have a fairly large parking structure at the library that is unusable because it is unsafe, at least uncomfortable to walk to and from. There's certainly nothing interesting for pedestrians craving a downtown experience if they were to park at the deck in theory. So we have these hardware and software issues that I think we could correct. So we have these hardware and software issues that I think we could correct, and I see development of this lot as being a means to correct those. And I mean means both in terms of opportunity to discuss the mechanics of those changes, but also a means to develop a funding source. We know that projects of this size usually come with off-site improvements that we could leverage for making some of these changes, the downtown fabric. And I think that that's an opportunity that we need to make sure is addressed in the RFP. The second piece I want to talk about is the use of that side as open space. Right now, there's three acres, and that's around about 120,000 square feet. And if you talk to any successful event promoter, they'll tell you, no matter what size space you give me, I can fill it, and as long as it draws there, no matter how small the space is, I can make it work. So we really, I think, need some guidance in terms of what really the needs are for festivals and open space downtown. I guess it's been about three years, somewhere between two and three years, I wrote a grant for the city to hire the U of A Community Design Center to study this lot. They went through four different development scenarios, and each of those scenarios was intended to explore one driving parameter, from artist housing to maximum density, to maximum parking, to maximum festival space. And in our conversations with some of the owners, we determined that 50,000 square feet of open space was about the ballpark of what we needed to maintain, and there's a proposal in that study that shows what it might look like if that space was maintained. And regardless of the parameters that we settle on, I think it's vital that we recognize throughout this process, in addition to the economic value, the social value of having open space that's available for the public to use in the downtown area. And really, beyond this kind of theoretical social value point that I'm making, I think we need to understand that there's a real opportunity to turn this lot into a legacy project for Fayetteville. And what I mean by legacy project is, I mean, the same kind of impact that Old Main has on our skyline, this lot could have on our downtown. With the right buildings and with the right open space, the arrangement is done with care, this space would be every bit as valued as our most cherished landmarks in the city. It would be a new landmark, and I think that is the true opportunity for us to consider in this RFP. With that in mind, I will be extraordinarily skeptical of any proposal that comes forward that develops this entire lot at one time. The design team would have to be international in caliber for me to really give a proposal of a super block scale any kind of credibility. So I favor an incremental approach that Alderman Marsh mentioned, and I think there are other reasons to favor an incremental approach as well. If we just want to talk about land value and value extraction, if we want to reduce this conversation so far that that's all we talk about, then I think we need to acknowledge that it would be a mistake to minimize transaction costs just so that we could do one transaction in the face of the opportunity to maximize our value if we can sell and develop one small piece, increase the value of the rest of it, and do it again, and again, and again. So I think it's important that we come up with the RFPs, any responses, if they go so far as to propose construction, instead of just a process, they should propose a well-fought-out phasing plan that accounts for incubation within the downtown market. If we buy into these points that there are some hardware and software opportunities in parking, that open space is important, and that an incremental approach may have more value to the city than one sale, then there's one other piece of machinery that I think we all need to be aware of, and that's this transportation master plan study that we are in the midst of signing a contract for now. It'll be somewhere between 13 and 18-month process, and we certainly have some interim results that would impact this. Part of that is going to be, at least we hope, will be a study of our parking systems and a set of recommendations for our parking systems. And I think that the information that we glean from that report will have direct bearing on what we want to do with this lot and what the downtown stakeholders can support in terms of our vision for this lot. As it stands right now, parking policy, certainly the parking conversation is driven by emotion and not by any real facts, and I think that having a study of this nature in hand would be the only responsible way to approve a proposal that addressed the entire site. Now, all that to say, I think there are probably some very small, very incremental opportunities for the site that exists today that are sufficiently incremental that I would feel comfortable approving them even before we had that study in hand, even before we saw a full phasing plan. So I would hope that we get a range of RFPs, and maybe we can even do some mixing and matching or combining to end up with the best solution for Fayetteville. So all that to say, I want to reiterate that I think this is a legacy opportunity for the city. This is something that we could do that would impact our residents' quality of life for quite literally centuries, and that's how we need to think about it.
Is there any public comment on this? Please stop.
Mayor, council members, I'm Bob Nichol. Been a resident here for 40-plus years, been in the real estate business for 40-plus years, specialized in commercial real estate for 20-plus years. I agree with several of the comments that you all have made. I guess my thought is, it is an extremely valuable piece of property. I also have understood that you're considering working some sort of agreement with Theater Squared on the lot catty-corner across from this piece of land. If that comes to fruition, which I hope it will, I think it would be a great addition there. But with the addition to the Walton Arts Center, a number more events are going to be scheduled there. Theater Squared is going to have a number of events, of course, and they'll be getting kids in there, you know, the yellow school bus concept that Walton Arts Center has done, they'll also do that, too. And I think what I would like to see is a delay in requests for proposals, because once you set that in motion, there are going to be a number of people out there spending a lot of bucks to come up with proposals they think the council would be amenable to. I'm not sure it's fair. I'm sure Jeremy can draw up a very good RFP that will give you most of the things you want, but until we get better knowledge about what impact Theater Squared, the Walton Arts Center additions, et cetera, are going to have in that area, I would say one more thing, and that is, it's going to be worth more five years from now than it is today. You're going to get more attractive proposals, I think, that you would like in the way of seeing a real positive impact for changing what's there now, which, you know, it's just a piece of asphalt right now. But we don't know what the real needs are going to be in that area until we've seen what's coming with these new developments in that area. And your statement about that impact study that's going on, I think we'd be very wise to wait before we even request an RFP, to look at that and then come back together and say, okay, now what do we do? Where do we want to go? But I just think it's, at this point, premature. They'll be there in five years, or three years, or 10 years. It's, that's a key piece of property, and the value is not going to go down, it's going to go up, in my opinion. And so I would certainly encourage you to discuss it more, maybe not pass this resolution tonight, but discuss it more at another meeting after you've had a chance to study some of those things. I guess if that's the will of the council, then approve it. But I would encourage you to wait. The value's not going to go down. And after you see the impact of the new development with the Arts Center, potentially Theater Squared, et cetera, and the study that Alderman Petty was talking about, I think then you could make more rational decisions about what kind of RFP you really want to put together at that point. Thank you.
Welcome, Bob. What other comments do we have?
I'm Janet McMullin, and I reside at 916 Eva. I was born in Fayetteville, Arkansas, and I've lived in Fayetteville or in the immediate area my entire life. Dixon Street has evolved immensely in my lifetime. As a little girl, my daddy drove a taxi down around Dixon Street for the taxi stand that was right there where, you know, the food court is now, where the trailers are pulled in. So I've always been on Dixon Street. If the parking lot goes away immediately, there will be no center stage or a place for vendors. Friday night, I'm on Dixon on Friday night, and anytime you go by that lot at $5 a pop, it's full. Just because we have the nice parking deck, I don't know that they're using it. I heard someone quote earlier, $433,000 for parking is what we have coming in right now for the city. I don't know if that includes everything, just the parking deck or Dixon Street, that is one question I would have. The parking garage has not and will not be able to replace a flat lot. I observe older people who come to Walton Arts Center, and yes, the people who can afford to go to Walton Arts Center are older citizens, they often discharge their passengers on the street, and then they drive around looking for a parking place, or they park in that open flat lot on Dixon Street and West because they aren't able, you know, to make it around and down and through the parking deck or wherever. I don't park there anymore because I don't like the new parking system. But are you trying to eliminate Bikes Blues and Barbecue and other festivals that bring revenue to our communities? I know that Mr. Petty addressed many issues, and I can agree with a lot of them. I think a delay might be a good idea, as the first gentleman spoke. It's not a good idea to sell off any of it in part or parcel until we've done lots of research of further development, because the property, we just need to look to our future. We don't want a one-time income of selling off parcels of it to jeopardize our future income if we hold on to it and do long-term leases, as you all have discussed. I'm trying real hard not to be emotional, because I've seen Dixon Street and our entire town change so much. But this piece of property impacts us all, and if you consider development, I would also admonish that you not do anything so tall that we would no longer be able to see Old Main. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address this on this?
Good evening, everybody. Hunter Haynes. Yes, sir. I just wanted to tell you that I appreciate the fact that this has been brought forward into you all as a possible res, as a possible opportunity for an RFP. I would be one of the parties that would be interested in participating in the study, certainly with the understanding that you may not get it. And this is, after all, it is really just a study, and it's an opportunity for not only myself, but I'm sure a lot of other folks, very qualified individuals, to present their ideas on what the future for this lot could be, and taking into account all the wonderful things from Marsh and Petty and Mayor Jordan. There's a lot of very interested parties that feel a sense of ownership here, and I just want to say thank you. I think now is an opportunity to certainly take a look at it any time. We don't take an opportunity to study something that is not final, that the council has the opportunity to vet and choose to do something or nothing, that not taking the opportunity to see what's out there is a missed opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, uh? Anybody else have any comments on this? Okay, I'm going to bring you back to the council. Yes?
I appreciate the comments that we heard. Janet, I especially can appreciate some of the comments you made, but I think that it's going to be really important to get the information first from these RFPs to see what we get back, you know, how much interest, what the money is, so we can look at it and actually see what people are willing to do with that property, to get their ideas and see that creative interest come into Fayetteville. So with that, I'll make a motion to pass the resolution.
Second. Okay. Any final comments from the council? Okay. Sondra, please call the office.
Yes.
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Kennett?
Yes.
Schottmar?
No.
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all. All right, number six. A resolution to approve a budget adjustment in the amount of $1,220,000 to fund the citywide 2016 employee compensation adjustment and to approve a certification pay plan for sworn police personnel. Paul?
As we discussed during the 2016 budget hearings, the mayor indicated that the 2016 budget did not contain salary increases, and he would come forward with a plan. He's adopted a plan and coming forward with it. The plan will be very similar to what we had last year. It will provide a step for all sworn personnel. The average of that, now that's not what each would get, but the average of that would be 3.7% of salary. To be consistent with that, 3.7% of salary would be devoted to the merit, for a merit plan, to be distributed by the division directors upon merit or performance of their employee. So that would keep the two consistent. It would also provide that any employees who have topped out, reached the top of their salary, would be eligible for a service award or a one-time payment, which would not be factored into their salary base going forward. The cost of this plan would be $819,000 for this fiscal year, because it's 75% of total cost, would cost $1,220,000 moving forward for the general fund. It would also, the plan would also include a component for certificate pay that we discussed last week at the agenda session for public safety for police. Police have the opportunity to get statewide certificates that are very pertinent to their job. It would pay each of the sworn officers, sworn police officers, $25 a month for any certificate gained. There are five certificates available, first basic one wouldn't count, would be $25 apiece, it could be up to four certificates per sworn officer. That would cost $77,000 this year and would cost $100,000 going forward. So this pay plan, we feel, is affordable. We did have a $1.6 million surplus at the end of last year. This is the first time I felt confident going forward that I was comfortable we could maintain that. Remember, for about the last four to five years, what we have been doing is waiting till the end of the first quarter for the mayor to make his decision if it looked like revenue was catching up enough to the expenditures, which we're increasing with salary, for salary increases, to keep consistent. Based on the revenue increases last year, it looks like this could be the year where it's caught up, and we could look at salary increases at budget adoption time in November in the 2017 budget. That's if we have some increases this year, if sales tax increases, for example, 3.2% roughly over what we have projected in 2016, we could keep consistent and take a look at having salary increases and factoring them into the budget at budget time, which would really be the proper way to do it. But as if you all, as you all recall, we were never comfortable with doing that until we saw how we finished out the year, see if we had a surplus and see what the year going forward was. Based on that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions we have following this. Yes, sir.
Where does this put our lowest paid employees? Are we getting them up to a living wage?
Getting them up to a living wage?
Our lowest paid employees, like, I know when we had the parking attendant discussion, we were paying $9 an hour, I believe. I know when I went to the Walton Arts Center the other night, I saw those attendants standing out there in the freezing cold, late at night. They were not college students. How do we, is this budget, or is this salary increase going to get our lowest paid employees How do we, is this budget or is this salary increase going to get our lowest-paid employees up to a reasonable salary?
Well, I guess it depends on what a reasonable salary is, Sarah. We do have, our lowest-paid employees currently make about $11.80 per hour. This would increase those salaries by 4%.
By 4%?
So our lowest-paid employees are, like I said, $11.80 per hour.
Well, what about our $9 an hour parking attendants?
They actually started at 10 an hour, not 9.
Oh, they start at 10, so we raise that. That's good.
Yes, okay. And those are, that's about our base, our smallest. So it all depends on, when we talk about cost, what it would take to bring everybody up, what would we be talking about, what wage rate.
So if we were to get everybody up to at least $1,250, is that going to do it?
To get everybody up to about $13 would cost us probably an additional $200,000 or more.
I just, you know, I've got a real problem with working people living in poverty, and especially our city employees. I know they do a really good job for us. A lot of the times, it's the lowest-wage ones that work the irregular hours, are subject to dangerous working conditions, which I guess I'd like to know what the council's thoughts are on spending a little bit more.
Okay.
I could make a comment, Paul. The, this year, the city does do its comprehensive compensation and benefits salary survey, which we do every four years. So we will be going to market to evaluate all of our jobs and benchmarking those positions in pay against comparable cities, our Northwest Arkansas cities, other cities that we use in the 23 benchmark items, and that plan will be out at the end of this year. So we, I would just encourage the council to really make sure you look at the data on where we come in at before we make those decisions because you could be making decisions on changing the entire pay grade or certain jobs that might have moved faster in market than at other times. If we make these decisions without that data, we just don't have the benefit of knowing exactly where we are.
Paul, what percentage of our total budget is dedicated to HR costs? Is something like 86%?
In the general, in the general fund, it's between 82% to 84%.
Thank you. While I'm very sympathetic to what you were saying, and I agree, but I think that we just have to look at what we have and do the best that we can to provide for our employees that do work very hard, and I would like to see us get there, but I think the mayor's brought forth a very reasonable proposal for now until we have our next round of information that Don was referring to.
Yes, John.
Well, the chief of staff and I don't always agree on things, but Don, I certainly agree with you on this one. I'm all for, and to Sarah Marsh's point, I'm all for our employees doing well and less reward than best we can, but we have to look at what the market is, and we can't just make an emotional decision, oh, we want them to have such and such a wage. If the world was a perfect place, that'd be a wonderful idea, but we've got economic realities we have to manage, and we are the trustees to the public funds and the public purse. We don't want to be giving away everything if it's beyond what the market would bear. So Don's point that we do these surveys to see where we fit with the other cities in Northwest Arkansas, we're not comparing ourselves to San Francisco, we're comparing ourselves to our geographic equals or similarity, cities, similar cities. That makes a lot of sense to me, you know. So I support this increase for our employees. At the same time, I get concerned when we talk about a living wage. That sounds like a nebulous something out there. I want to see what the market will do for our employees.
Well, we're going into the salary survey this year.
Good.
We'll have a much better idea in the fall of what we have.
And I will say, the last time that we did have a salary survey, Sarah, as you may recall, we concentrated on the lower end of the, of that salary position. That's the time we were talking about employees down at the $9 wage, and we did push them up. So we did, at the mayor's direction and the council's direction, we did look at those to try to push them up. But I'll just echo that the salary surveys is going to be done this year. We've got $100,000 budgeted to do it. It'll be comprehensive. I think it will give us all a better idea for exactly where we are in comparison with everybody else at that point.
I just, you know, in this region, we have a lot of low wages, and our housing costs are rising. We have record amounts of, record-high occupancy of apartments, so it's harder and harder to buy or to find affordable housing, and our transportation costs are exceeding the cost of housing. And I just want us to be sensitive to taking care of our workforce and making sure that we're not part of the problem, so that the people who work for us, that they can meet their basic needs and they're not, you know, we have, our health insurance has a $1,000 deductible, and for a person who's, you know, making $10 an hour, that just prices them out. Then suddenly, that health insurance is worthless because they can't meet that sort of deductible. So, you know, I would rather see us focus more of our raise on the lower end of the spectrum and maybe give the higher-earning workers a little bit less until we can get these, these low-wage workers up to a point where they can live in dignity and afford to live in the city that they work in.
Okay. What other discussions?
Pass the resolution.
Public comment? What? We will. What public comment do we have on that? On this? I'm going to bring it back to the council. We have motion to second pass the resolution. Tom, please go over.
Marsh.
Yes.
Kimmy.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Kenneth.
Yes.
Lotur.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Gray. Yes.
Okay. What announcements do we have?
Mayor, in case some of the city council didn't see my memo this afternoon, we have prevailed in court. We had a victory in that the ordinance has been upheld by Circuit Judge Doug Martin. He agreed with my primary argument that, in fact, it did comply with Act 137 because we were not creating a new, second classification that was already existing in state law, and we just used it and expanded the protections. And so we have prevailed in this round. I certainly expect the attorney general to appeal. So this is only the first hurdle that the citizen-passed ordinance has made, but I will continue to do my best to try to protect the vote of the people that did enact this ordinance.
Okay. What other announcements do we have?
Mayor, I have a announcement. We want to thank the Fayetteville Public Schools District Superintendent Hewitt, Paul O'Neill, the administrative assistant to the superintendent, for helping us schedule this space while we go through our renovations. We also want to thank Gary Day, the technology director of the district, and Max McCollie, who scored the video assistance and the technology assistance that they provided to us to have our meeting here tonight. We also want to remind citizens that our next city council meeting will be held at the Washington County Korn Court, location at the Washington County Bank of Offices. There will be continued meetings here at this facility for the planning commission as we go through the renovation of our city chambers. Also want to remind citizens that our bulky waste cleanups begin this month of March, and the first one is March 19th. It's from 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM, two locations, the recycling and trash facility on Happy Hollow Road and Owl Creek Elementary School at 375 North Rupel Road will be the first cleanup. Citizens can go to any cleanup that takes place, but they're located around the wards and the first is in Ward 4.
All right. Any other announcements? Okay. I want to take this personal moment to personally thank Kit Williams for his defense of this mayor's office, the city council, and citizens of this city on the unified civil rights issue.
Thank you.
It's been 15 years of service today, was that right?
That's right.
Today's your 15-year anniversary?
Yeah, I remember this anniversary. And I've been very happy to have been able to serve my own town as a city attorney-at-law. And I want to thank you all for all the support and help that you've given me through the years, and I hope that we can have some more good years ahead.
All right. All right, thank you all very much. We're adjourned.